In a live stream on our website, www.tingsboroughma.gov. A recording of this meeting will be available through the video on demand portion of our website. Open meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio so declare that now. Seeing none. After instruction from the state fire marshal and the Tingsboro fire chief, in the event of an emergency, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear of the room and one to my left. Do that. Can I ask everybody to stand for the pledgeable agents?
Pledgeable agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask everybody to introduce themselves and I'll start with Larry.
Larry Claussen, Finance Committee.
Ed Smith, Finance Committee.
Shannon McCandrick, Executive Assistant.
Mike Moran, Select Board.
Good evening, Eric Eldridge.
Good evening, Katerina Kalabokis.
Good evening, Matt Hansen, Town Administrator.
Good evening, Colm Wazell, Assistant Town Administrator.
Good evening, Ron Schneider, Finance Committee.
Scott Pozerski, Finance Committee.
Okay, first on the agenda is meeting minutes. Can I have motion to, for the meeting minutes, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the regular session meeting minutes for June thirteenth, 2022, and to approve but not release the executive session meeting minutes for June thirteenth, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that passes 4-0-0. Next, executive session meeting minutes, please.
We did that.
We did that.
We got them both.
You got them both?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that passes 4-0-0 also then. So we have quite a few public hearings, but if anybody has any comments that does not retain, does not, about the public hearings, we have citizens of business time if anybody wants to talk about any other topics. Seeing none. First on the agenda is the Town Administrator's Report.
Mr. Chair, as an added convenience for our residents and to help reduce the numbers of recyclables that end up in the trash, large pieces of cardboard can be disposed over in the containers in the satellite parking lots of the middle schools as well as the highway department. Residents and businesses were happy to announce saved a total of $290,984 in the period of January through March as part of the town's municipal aggregation with First Point Power, which is administered by our consultant group, the Colonial Power Group. So these savings reflect the difference between the National Grid basic service rate and the rate that's competitively bid through the town's municipal aggregation. So to date since 2017, when we started the aggregation, residents and businesses have saved over $1 million now with this last quarter in savings. So just a great milestone for the town and showing that the aggregation has really been working. The middle school building committee interviewed six construction management firms and ultimately selected Fontaine Brothers Incorporated. And if any residents or members of the board are interested in seeing work they've done on similar K through 12 schools, we put a link to their website here in the Town Administrator's Report. We're happy to announce that paving is complete on Dan Fourth Road and Jock's Road. Some additional sidewalk work and cleanup work will continue, but the paving itself is complete and looks great. Residents can now sign up on the sewer website for discharge alerts as part of the library of things. The IT department helped the library get Chromebooks up and running so that patrons can check them out along with a wireless hotspot. So if any residents are having difficulty accessing the internet, the library has a fantastic resource for you available. The summer library program registrations are very high and circulation rates for the last month are higher than any time in the last five years, including our pre-COVID time. So the library has really rebounded very well and they're just about to start their five-year strategic planning review process this September. The planning board has opened their hearing on the 500,000-square-foot warehouse, proposed warehouse, at 424 Middlesex Road. The 50 West Road Road, Abap's Religious Temple campus is moving forward and they've informed us that they're targeting a groundbreaking in the fall of this year or the spring of 2023, depending on how their final bid and design goes this summer. The recreation department is seeking vendors, and I won't steal all of her thunder, but seeking vendors, crafters, and sponsors for the block party, which is going to be held on August 27th, and Allison will be discussing that in a little bit more details shortly. In addition to that, one or two more quick updates for the Board of Selectmen. Thirty-nine Althea Ave, the Board of Selectmen did extend the deadline to make back tax payments on that property, and to date we have not received those tax payments. So just want to keep the board updated. We're still waiting for a response from the lawyer. And Senator Kennedy's office called on Friday last minute and asked if we had any large transportation projects that could fit into the bond bill that the state is approving this Thursday. And Senator Kennedy added our $1.2 million Frost Road project, an intersection project that the board was planning to put through the tip process. If it makes it onto the transportation bond bill, that would be one other potential avenue for funding if the governor ultimately released it. So Senator Kennedy's going to put that forward and hopefully it will get included in the bond bill this Thursday. And again, we have a few years to try and get the governor to release the funds after that. And, Colm?
Any question, any questions for Matt? I'd just like to make one comment. I'd like to really thank Matt for taking the initiative, you know, to saving the residents' money on their electrical bills. $1 million is quite a milestone. You know, the residents don't need to do anything, it's just that their rates are reduced because of the effort that Matt has put into that. So $1 million, the residents, you saved, you really didn't have to do anything. There's not too many times you go to build your house and you just save money and you don't really have to do anything. So thank you for that, Matt. Any other questions for Matt? Colm?
Thank you. The Commission on Disability is still seeking candidates to serve as a volunteer leader for their Neighborhood Brigade Initiative. The Neighborhood Brigade is a nonprofit that organizes volunteers in communities to help neighbors in need. The chapter leader is responsible for being the point of contact between the local chapter and the larger Neighborhood Brigade. The nonprofit itself does a lot of the work, including background checks, maintaining their website and things like that. So it's not a big lift, but they do require that at least one resident serve as the volunteer leader before we can initiate the program. So if anybody is interested, they can reach out to our office to learn more. Some capital project updates. There's a few capital projects before the board tonight for contract awards, so I'll skip those. But we are preparing an invitation for bids right now for the police department station maintenance, which will include the replacement of six exterior doors and their exterior handrails. Bids will be available on July 20th and due on August 10th. All the vehicles that were ordered as a part of the FY23 capital plan, the orders have been placed. The highway vehicles likely won't be delivered until the fall, but we're expecting the building commissioner's vehicle to be delivered sometime this month. Guardian Energy, which is our energy consultant that helps with Green Communities Project, has ordered all of the materials for the elementary school LED lighting and transformer project. The transformer is significantly delayed, so work on that likely won't start until the end of August or early September. That's funded partially by a grant from the Commonwealth and partially matched from the Capital Asset Committee. The Tingsboro Elementary School playground design is now officially complete. Site work will commence in August and the playground will be fully installed by November 1st if the supply chain issues stay at the level that they're at right now. Ideally, we would have had the whole project done this summer, but the supply chain is just not making that possible. But that project is likely to come in significantly under budget. Supplies for the Scarlet Brook culvert project are on order and work will be scheduled in the coming weeks. The contract for this work was approved by the board at its meeting in June. And the engineering department is finalizing the design for Madeline Terrace drainage project, and I expect that we'll put that project out to bid next month and award a contract in August.
Thank you. Any questions for Colm?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Relative to the culverts, any indication on like what lead time? In other words, do we think we're going to be able to get these done before winter or is this?
Yes, I believe so. The specialized work being done on a Scarlet Brook culvert saw some significant lead times that's since resolved itself. Most of the work that we're doing on Madeline Terrace is routine and doesn't require any specialized materials, so I don't expect that there will be a significant delay on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Colm? Okay. At this time, Colm, if you wouldn't mind that Allison take your seat for a second. I'd like to call Allison up for the public hearing. Can we have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen open the public hearing and waive the reading of the hearing notice and the legal ad.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that passes 5-0-0.
Thank you. Good evening. Coming before you this evening for our annual road closure and liquor license for the block party, being held August 27th, 2022. Thank you. So we are looking to close the road, Kendall Road day of, and we are looking to close Winslow Road two days prior for a setup of staging and whatnot.
Any questions from the board for Allison? Selectwoman Wintestrom?
More of a comment that, you know, we've typically closed that Winslow Road, right? Several days before, so that's nothing new. And all of kind of the standard procedures are the way we've done it for the last, you know, two years, obviously taking a break for the COVID years.
Right, yes. Yep.
Any other questions for the board?
No, I was just going to make sure that people were aware that it's very similar to what's happened in the past and that everything has gone pretty smooth and people are now used to it.
Yes.
Any comments from any residents about this? Seeing none. Any other questions? So we're all set. Can I have, we need to close the public hearing.
Yeah. I move that the Board of Selectmen close the public hearing.
Second.
The motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that passes 5-0-0. Okay, now deliberation of the board. Any other questions from the board? Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the entertainment license and one-day liquor license for Saturday, August 27th, 2022, from 11:00 a.m. through 9:00 p.m., and approve the road closure permits for Winslow Road from 7:00 a.m. on Thursday, August 25th, 2022, through 7:00 a.m. on Monday, August 29th, 2022, for Kendall Road on Saturday, August 27th, 2022, from 7:00 a.m. through 9:30 p.m., and to implement a lane restriction in the right southbound lane on Middlesex Road on Saturday, August 27th, 2022, from 7:00 a.m. through 9:30 p.m.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that passes 5-0-0.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much, Allison.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes.
I just, while Allison's here, I think it's only appropriate that we acknowledge as a board and for the public her recognition that she received from the state as one of the Commonwealth's unspoken heroines. So it's fitting while you're here, Allison, for us to just say thank you for all the evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison, for all the hard work.
Colm?
Next on the agenda is the approve the FY22 year-end budget transfers. Mr. Town Administrator?
Mr. Chair, I won't read every line item on the list because there's a few small ones, but I do have a memo put together, which I want to read a few of the highlights. Thank you, Colm. So I know there's a few members on this board and the Finance Committee, so just want to start by saying, so for the year-end transfers, we're not asking for additional funding at this time, we're just asking to cover transfers within and between departments. All the funding overall has been approved as part of the fiscal year 22 budget. All of the additional surplus funds after these transfers are approved will ultimately become free cash to be reallocated at a future town meeting. We had a total surplus of approximately $1 million in fiscal year 2022, so happy to report that. Majority of the fiscal year 2022 year-end transfers are covered within departments with small transfers between unspent salary and expense line items. Those totaled $187,867.52. Several departments, including the Communication Center, Fire, and the Council on Aging, required additional funds to be transferred to offset their year-end deficits, and those remaining deficits can be covered by any of the other accounts that had a surplus. Sometimes in the past, we've picked multiple accounts. In this year, it was just easier to use the health insurance line item because there was such a big surplus in that one line item, we're able to cover all of the other deficits with just a very small portion of the health insurance turnbacks. So we had $722,308.85 turned back in health insurance. That is somewhat a one-time occurrence. We always budget a little bit of a cushion in that line item, but we actually received a one-month premium holiday this year because Maya and basically with COVID, less people going to the doctor, they had a surplus and the consortium we're part of essentially gave that money back in the form of a credit, so they didn't charge us for one month. So we had a very large surplus in health insurance this year. But as I mentioned, those few remaining accounts required $129,727.73 in additional transfers. Few of these transfers are the result of personnel cost of living adjustments that weren't finalized yet at the beginning of the fiscal year. The total amount of funding for debt was included in the budget, but the breakdown of debt principal versus interest hadn't been finalized yet, so that's now finalized and we can transfer that principal over. The Streetlight account is showing a deficit. It's really more of a paperwork issue between National Grid, the DPU, and our consultants who handle our purchase of energy credits from the landfill. So we actually have $100,000 in credits on the Streetlight account that we're working to reallocate. Can only change them and allocate them once per year, so they've been building up on that account. We're in the process of getting those transferred over now. The police department had $48,000 and change in deficit accounts, but that was offset by about $75,000 in surpluses from some of their other accounts. So they had about $26,000 in surpluses. Will be transferring over to the Communication Center to offset their deficit. And it's not noted anywhere on here, but I did just add a note in my file that we do have about $10,000 in addition from the police department that will be returned because Maya provides insurance coverage for injured-on-duty claims, but that money basically comes back to the general fund. We can't pull it into their department to offset the salary. So sometimes their salary line item goes into a deficit. The insurance company provides us the money, but we have to go to town meeting to reallocate it, so we just transfer the funds from another account. That $10,000 from Maya will just fall to free cash. The Communication Center salary deficit was predominantly the result of the group's first collective bargaining agreement since they formed a separate union. That was a total of about $67,000 of their overage in retro salary and educational incentives. That was done based on a review of comps, and you'll remember the Communication Center line item went up quite significantly in fiscal '23, so that amount moving forward had been discussed and moving forward will be part of the budget. And unfortunately, they did have several staff illnesses this year. Without going into great detail, about $32,000 in unanticipated overtime was a cause of that event. Those three or four individuals who had to be out for an extended period of time. As you can imagine, when you only have one or two people on a shift for the Communication Center, if one person's out, you have to backfill that person with an overtime shift. So some overtime is always carried for vacations, sick time, et cetera, but for extended illnesses, those are rare occurrences. In addition, did just want to note that in the past, we've had money available on the PSAP grant in the police department to cover overages in dispatch salary, but the majority of that funding for the next few years, can you hear me, Ronnie? Oh, I'm okay, is being used to replace our dispatch console, so that funding wasn't available to us this year. The Fire Department's net deficit was about $37,000. This was the final year of the Fire Department's first union contract, and a few things were still being worked out essentially. We do believe those line items are appropriately funded in fiscal '23. Do want to note that the Ambulance Enterprise Fund actually ran a surplus of $87,000, and typically it's run as one department, so essentially they washed, but due to the nature of the ambulance enterprise as an enterprise fund, we can't actually transfer that over, even though most of the staff are paid out of both accounts. The actual revenue in that count versus what we spent out was over, so that money will stay in the enterprise fund. Council on Aging clerical wages line item ran a deficit because the administrative assistant contractually received a small increase in pay during extended absence of the COA director. Legal counsel ran a bit high this year by about $6,000. Again, that's due to several costly employee disciplinary matters that were unforeseen at the beginning of the fiscal year. If you have any questions, I have also included for the Selectmen and the Finance Committee a simple year-end transfer list that shows all the transfers to and from, a motion, and then a full copy of the year-to-date expense report, which has every single line item in it. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We also, the Finance Committee here, you know, to also discuss this, and I meant to ask Ron if you wanted to open the Finance Committee meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I hereby declare the Finance Committee meeting open.
Okay. And I'll leave it up to you and the Finance Committee to ask the first questions, if they have any, for Matt.
Matt, I took a look at everything. I don't have any questions. Looks like it's based on just transfers. The one thing I am happy to see is a surplus on the ambulance enterprise fund, because I know a lot of people talk, when we first got the ambulance, that was going to be running a deficit. I knew last year we did run a small deficit, correct?
Yeah, about $60,000 last year.
But this year, you know, surplus of $87,000, which is good. It's always good when you have a surplus.
Mr. Claussen, any questions or comments from you?
No questions.
Lambert, any questions? Mr. Pozerski? I'm all set, too. I think these transfers are just routine accounting, so I have no further comments or questions.
Thank you. All over the board, Selectwoman Wintestrom?
Thank you. The surplus in the ambulance, is that a result of us having already made the final payment? I mean, that was a big deal that we had, we were running the payments on two ambulances that we had to start up. So is that a result of that or are collections high?
A little bit of both. The last ambulance payment was in the $30,000 range, so that's probably almost half of the surplus. The extra $50,000 in surplus just had to do with the ambulance runs being a little higher than expected.
Because we don't make a lot of money on the run, so it would, I guess, be a result of collections, and you could really say. Collections, I mean, our collection rate has to be up or when we bumped up the increase. I mean, trying to understand going forward, we did an adjustment on the rates that we were charging for the ambulances, so did that, you know, kind of correct itself in terms of cost or is it our collection, you know, we did well during collection rates, which we might not have done during COVID?
The, in speaking with the fire chief, the runs have gone up. The collections and the runs don't always match up. Sometimes we have a lot of runs and it happened to be a month with a lot of Medicare pickups and they don't pay very well versus the private insurance, so it's not an exact ratio. But we were basically trying to be conservative with the budget this year because we had run the deficit last year, but I think the runs are where we expect them to be. So that surplus is what we'd expect to see in a year where we don't have an ambulance payment. It may only be another one or two years before we need to start purchasing a new ambulance. Remember, the fire chief did request one through capital this year, so if he's not getting it through capital, he may very likely have to take his frontline ambulance, make it his new backup, and put a new payment on. In the first few years, the payments might be $50,000 or $60,000. So I don't expect the $80,000 to stay every year moving forward as a surplus if we're buying a new ambulance soon, but it's about what we'd expect.
Thank you.
Selectwoman Moran, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions at this time.
Selectwoman?
No questions this time.
No questions, thank you.
I'd just like to say, I was glad to see when the final tally came that the Labor Council, you know, fees went way down from the previous year. We had a lot of cleanup to do and we still were able to reduce that, and I'm hoping to reduce that even more this year. I don't have any further questions either. Okay, with that, can I have a motion?
I move that the Board approve the fiscal year 22 year-end budget transfers as presented.
Second.
So does the Finance Committee take a separate vote or are we supposed to vote with us?
Where it's supposed as a joint meeting, they can vote at the same time if you're willing to call it, or they can take a separate vote, but it's appropriate to take a vote collectively as long as it gets at least six votes.
Vote with you, it's fine. Okay, vote with us. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that passes 10-0-0.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Chairman? Chair, sort of we don't get in the way of the rest of your busy agenda, the Finance Committee is going to move their meeting to, down the hall to the next conference room.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing for the Craft Brewery. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen open the public hearing and waive the reading of the hearing notice and the legal ad.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that passes 5-0-0. Okay, we're open, so take it away. Who's going to start?
License Administrator, Shannon McCandrick?
Yes, so included in your packet tonight is an application for a special permit for a craft brewery and taproom under section 21130 and 21144 of the Tingsboro zoning bylaws. The applicant, Lay Martinson, on behalf of Modest Roots Brewing, is requesting a special permit to operate the craft brewery and taproom at this site. Currently, this business is operating only as a craft brewery, but would like to add the addition of a taproom. Mr. Martinson is here tonight to explain the application and to answer any questions that the board may have. In reviewing this application, our office requested comments from all relevant departments, and there were no adverse comments beyond the Board of Health noting that if there will be service of food, a license from the Board of Health will also be required. Additionally, we advertised this hearing in the Lawal San on June 27th and July 4th, 2022, and the applicant sent notices to a butters by certified mail.
Okay. Would you like to make an opening comment?
Certainly, on behalf of myself and the team of Modest Roots you see strategically located in the middle advertising for us, we wanted to thank the town for how cooperative you guys have been with us. We've been at this a couple of years and tried to get it going at a couple of locations and found it challenging to say the word with the onset of COVID, to work with a group of folks who see the value as we see it and were willing to help us. We appreciate that. Been open since April 1st, things are going well, and when we were working with Eric and other members of the committee to help you write your bylaws and get it passed, which I understand recently happened, the state finally accepted them, you know, we had always had the intention of hopefully having a taproom, right? Given our location, for those of you who don't know where we are, we're strategically located behind Honeydew Donuts in a 1,250-square-foot building, probably smaller than this, as right next to the storage place. You know, we were small and, you know, people drive up to get our stuff and we'd like to be able to let them sample it as the state intended when they put this law into place. So that's the next logical step. You know, we, and when I say small, we are small in that every time we brew, we make two kegs, okay? That's it. It's called a one-barrel system, so. We work all week to be open Friday afternoons for about three hours and about six hours on Saturday, and you'll knock on wood, sales keep going the way they do, and, you know, then we do the process all over again. And when I say "we," I mean them. That's what they do. So you put the beer in the kegs and then you put it in cans, one at a time, hand by hand, roll them up, close them up, and, you know, that's how it works. I'm happy to answer any que, I could go on for hours. I'm a lawyer by training, so I'll not do that, but.
Thank you. Any residents have any comments about the special hearing? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the board. Selectwoman Wintestrom, you have any questions?
Yes, so with the, with the opening of the taproom, do they have to serve food if they're serving alcohol or are you only doing sample sizes so that doesn't require you to have a food license? But if somebody wanted to come in and drink a, is somebody going to be allowed to come in and drink a full beer, but if they did, obviously we would have to serve food, right?
The answer to that question is no. So the special permit, according to your bylaws, allows you to require us to do food, you know, and I went back and forth with Eric on this because the state law does not require it, okay? And obviously, an operation of our side, we can't support that. We can't. I mean, we barely have enough room for our gear and enough room to put tables there. So our idea and our hope was, you know, to get involved with some of the folks locally here, you know, pizza delivery, hangout, order a pizza, that'd be great. I mean, everybody loves donuts, right? What goes better with beer than donuts? You know, we can do that, but the direct answer is no. You know, unless, if you were to require us to do food, we wouldn't do it. We just can't support it, so.
We had talked in the past when the bylaw was being developed, if a really small operation such as this had gone in, the food requirement that the board may want to be consider could be something as small as bag chips or bag pretzels, just so patrons who, you know, feel the need to have something while they're drinking would have something available, but that could be a bare minimum. So I just want to clarify, food wouldn't necessarily mean the board has to require the board has to require you to have a pizza oven or have anything like that. If the board wanted something, you know, very minimal, it's fully your discretion based on the bylaw. But that might be, that was something that was at least discussed when the bylaw was being conceived.
Got it. I mean, I guess, you know, the intent behind, you know, serving food both, you know, from the state law and others. And I, and I, I'm not saying I think it's a necessity there, but, you know, somebody could come in and obviously consume a few full-sized beers and not have anything to eat, and that potentially is a problem. Or it, or view it similar to like a bar. They come in and sit down and have a few beers and stuff, and there's no food. We require bars to serve food to kind of keep that, you know, intoxication level, right? Down or, and require it. I guess, you know, the question becomes, you know, do you have a limit on what people can come in and consume if you're not serving food?
Well, there's no state requirement, you know, to say, but there is, you know, common sense requirement. We don't want to be, I mean, when I give this presentation at other towns, I mean, that's a common misconception that a craft brewery is like a bar. I mean, I had to do this in Billerica, and I had a whole presentation on what these things are and what those, those things aren't. So, for example, the town approved another permit just like this down the road for a monster operation, I would call it. I mean, they're going full-blown pizza ovens, massive, you know, massive, massive operations. We are so small that, you know, that's just not really a possibility. You know, our hope is there are licensed food truck vendors that we can work with and bring them in, you know. I don't want people to drive up there and not be able to get something to eat if they don't want to. Our friends over at Navigation Brewery, who were at your block party last year, you know, they, they don't serve food at their place, and they're a much bigger operation than we are. But they bring in trucks if they can, you know, that's our intent.
Very familiar with that setup.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, you know, that's sort of the spirit of what we're going for right now, yeah.
That's all the questions I have at the moment. Thank you.
Selectwoman Moran?
I just have a few questions. One is, I was unaware that, I'm very new to the Select Board. I was just recently elected, so I was unaware this establishment existed in that area. So you might see my face pop in there to try some of those kegs. But...
Bring some of your friends.
Exactly, exactly.
Up until now, you couldn't try them, so.
Until, yeah, up until now, you couldn't try them. Yeah, that's what I'm looking forward to.
Yeah.
But, so I'm just curious, what type of beer is it, or alcohol is made there? Is it...
Yeah, so it's under the state's Farmer-Craft Brewery license, right? So people are familiar with that. The state incentivized people to basically take their home brewing operations and try to commercialize them, and they give you a lot of incentives because the overhead's pretty low and you can, you know, make your time, take it to it. So we, right now, have six beers that we've put into production. We have an easy-drinking stout, which is my favorite, known as Suzie's Ahead Banger, named after the song. The cans are fantastic. If you're not a stout drinker, you'll like this one. We have a couple of IPAs. One's called Mob of Emus, the other is Blessing of Norwals, so collective nouns of animals. We have a, another one called Pandemonium of Parrots, which is made of something called pog, which I believe stands for passion fruit, orange, and guava, which is like a Hawaiian thing, which is hard to get. It's pretty exclusive, so you may want to call ahead to make sure we have it. We have a blonde ale called Heart of Glass, which is also named after the Blondie song with another fantastic can. And then, soon to be released, although this is a public hearing, a cream ale, which has not been named yet, which we're working on. And then we have a Heffeweizen too, which I don't know the name of either. But, you know, Tom, the gentleman back here, makes all this stuff. He's been to Brewer's School. It's been something he's been passionate about for more than ten years, I would say, you know, kind of all over the place. You know, a real, and that's his father, Bill, sitting next to him, who shares in that. It's really a father-and-son operation, you know, they're on the front lines, and I help with the licensing and...
Well, I just tried to help you get free marketing too, with just asking...
Yeah, yeah, come on down, you know, I heard there's a block party coming in, you know. What goes better with a block party than beer?
I'm also, thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. So how many people do you anticipate, how many seats do you anticipate being available?
So, you know, so you, we go through this all the time. So I'll answer your question directly, which is less than forty-nine. The reality of our operation is we probably can't even sustain that, you know. Think about, we're selling out now on cans, and if you're trying to preserve some of that beer to serve, you know, while you're on-site, it's going to be tough. I mean, you can run the occupancy numbers, which, which we've done, you know, you're looking at, you know, fifty-four people is what it says. We'd never be able to support that, you know. With three employees, we got parking for days, you know. We're open such limited times when no one else is in the building, you know, really out of the way. So that's the idea, you know. I mean, obviously, we want as big an occupancy as we can have on the off-chance we could ever grow. But I think our reality is if we wanted to grow, we'd have to move. We want to stay in Tingsborough, you know, we've, we've got a plan for that. Our landlord is fantastic. The town, like I said, you guys could not have been more gracious and helpful, so. What else?
Just relative to that, so I know that we were talking about the food situation and, you know, it's, given the amount of beer that's available, you know, not having that capacity, is there anything that, man, are there any restrictions that we would put on this? So let's say they have a manufacturing facility that's somewhere else where they could then do more than what that capacity is, and then we start running into that situation where food could be an issue or, you know, they're able to take care of those forty-nine. Is there anything that we have on the application that indicates that it's for this size building, this size capacity? And if there's a material change, that they would have to come before the board?
So it would be probably smart to add that to the application that this special permit for this seating and this capacity and with this particular food limit that you may or may not put on is specific only to production that would be done at this facility? So as a craft brewery, they can only sell their, their product, but if they were to have their product maybe also manufactured at another site, they wouldn't be able to bring it here to increase their sales without having to modify the special permit? So you could clarify that in the special permit, that it is only for production from this particular site. And then again, short of that, it would be if you wanted to add, again, maybe that some prepared food is available, such as bag chips or, or something that, you could leave it up to their discretion. But I, I would probably recommend that they have at least something available. Again, it doesn't have to be food they prepared, but just prepared food available.
Yeah, my, my, sorry, my, our... I haven't had the pleasure of working with your health department yet, you know, some are better than others, you know. I mean, we want to work with you guys, right? A limitation on stuff that's produced there? It's hard to find a contract brewer, but if, the reality is if we want to offer, say, more types of beer, right? We can only make one at a time. If we wanted to make our stout, that means we can't make our IPA. There may be a time we may want to contract to have someone help us. For example, if there is a block party coming up in order to meet demand, you know, you can only work so much and do so much. We could do that. That would be a hindrance that, you know, as an unforeseen situation where we could be in trouble, right? And we wouldn't want to run afoul of that.
Yeah, that, that was where I was going next, was based on those two things, was to ask whether that would be a burden for you folks, both if we were to put some limitation as to manufacturing and the amount that's there, drank at that premises, and then also from a food standpoint, you know. It could be making a vending machine available where there's chips or making it so you provide bagged chips, things like that. I'm not talking about anything that would be prepared. Are either, it sounds like the first one is a burden.
Potential burden, yes.
Potential burden for you. What about the, the food?
Yeah, you want us to put a vending machine, I'm sure, you know, we can find someone to, to do that. My experience with those is you're kind of required to meet a minimum on that kind of stuff, and they, someone may pull their contract, and I'm totally shooting from the hip here on this one. But the reality, like, you know, we want to do it. So if that's, if that's what it is, we got to have, where I grew up, they used to have little black racks with the chips on there, walk up, pick them up. As long as we don't have, you know, burden some interactions with the health department on, you know, what needs to happen beyond whatever, you know, that's, I assume, fine, right?
Common Vic license.
We just took a vote, so, yeah.
Selectwoman Cal Bogus, you have a question?
So the special permit, how long is it good for?
The special permit essentially would be in perpetuity for this business owner. The special permit conditions typically require change in ownership to, you know, the board be notified. But as long as they continue to run it, the special permit itself won't have an expiration. You know, but again, one other thing to consider where there are still a few unknowns might be, you know, hours of operation, for example. If that's limited in the special permit, because you're concerned about the size and scope, did you have specific hours in mind? I didn't...
Well, I want Tom to work as much as he can, but unfortunately, he has a full-time job as well, so that's, as do I. The reality is, we, we have a dance studio that's in there too, and as a condition of our lease, we won't be open when they're in session. We have great neighbors, right? So, you know, you don't, as much as I'm sure some of the parents would love to come while their sons and daughters are doing dance, you know, that's not really the type of operation we are. So, you know, right now, we're talking Fridays, you know, our basic hours are Fridays, five to eight. And, you know, we limit them however we want. Saturday, we're like noon to six. We'd obviously want the taproom to be open, you know, later in the summer if, if we can. You may throw in a Thursday or Sunday afternoon football every now and then. It's just, we, it's really Tom and Tom's mom and, and his dad who are doing all this stuff. Now, I can work the cash register, just not very well on purpose, so I don't, they don't ask me to do it. But that, that's really it. But we, you know, propose something, we'll be happy to talk it over, you know, it's...
Maybe just one other way to address the issue of ramping up production and offsite production. If they, you know, were able to do that and they wanted to stay open till ten, eleven, twelve and grow their operations, they'd have to come back and discuss it. If you limited the hours now, it would reduce naturally how much they can sell.
Selectwoman Cal Bogus?
I mean, my comment would be, right, you guys are beyond tiny, with two of you doing microbrews, right? And most of brewing is cleaning and doing other stuff anyway, right? So from the way that I'm looking at it is, first and foremost is, I really would like you to grow, right?
Yeah, no, we would love that too.
I want you, it's better for us and better for our residents if you're open more hours, right? That's, that's better, right? So anything we can do to help you grow is great. I do think it's a good thing to anticipate in the future, but I think anticipating then making enough beer to have to have it somewhere else and cart it in on a regular basis is quite down the road from where we are now. I do understand the food issue. It goes both ways. At the end of the day, I know if I'm going to a brewery, even if I can buy chips, I'll stay for a little bit longer, have an extra beer or two if I'm hungry. I think it would be beneficial even for the brewery to offer something small, a bag of chips, a bag of pretzels, et cetera. And to Selectwoman, Selectwoman Winstrom's point, for the drunkenness level, right? Even a bag of something, right, will help immensely. So, you know, I'm in favor of having even just that chip rack that you were talking about, nothing substantial, right? But something like that.
Yeah, sure.
But at the end of the day, I think it is especially because of, we want you to outgrow that space. We want you to stay in Tingsborough. We want to work with you, right? And anything that we can do to facilitate that is better, right? So I don't know if, if I would be in favor of putting too many constraints on this just because I think we can't really see where they're going to grow to, what their needs are going to be, and because they are so small. So, you know, in the future, if it does become a problem, or if they have more needs, right? Then maybe we can address it then, right? We approve the special permit as is, maybe add in some requirement for food. And then, I mean, they're so small, they're not even open two full business days, really.
No, not even, it's fine, we, you know, we, we talk about, you know, is it a good week, is it a bad week? Like, you know, in April, we sold, I was like, we've been open for five hours, like, you know. You know, and you've got how many hundreds of hours in the production and planning and permitting and everything like that, it's...
And having seats will help improve that, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And I'm all for the having the seats and having the taproom, right? That will allow people to try different beers, right? One glass of this, one glass of that. They come back with their friends, and it allows you to grow, right? If you don't have a taproom, it's going to be very difficult for you to grow. So I support the taproom all the way. I think that's a fantastic idea. Good luck to the two of you. Not only is it just two of you, it's all family, so I wish you the best of luck. You know, and I, I just, I, we want to work with you. You've been great so far. Thank you for working with us. My opinion would be to approve the special permit as it is, along with having a food requirement of some sort, and then we just move forward from there.
Mr. Chair, I could support that. That's, that's my mindset as well.
Yeah, okay. You know, I, I would agree with that too. And I, I think if we just put it as, you know, if they would sell some prepackaged food, it would be, you know, then you can decide what that is, chips, cookies, pretzels. You know, just a brewery in Kettering, Maine, and they had a popcorn machine there, you know, which is another idea, right? So I think anything that you have, that you can have, sell prepackaged food, I think would help you out. You know, you don't have to have a kitchen, kitchen requirements, you know, and, you know, we do want to work with you. We're glad you opened your business here. Thank you very much. Their beer is very good. I have had some. I had to bring it home, of course.
Disappointing, right? It's a long ride.
Still very good.
Not a long ride for Mike and I. We live right around the corner.
Not a long ride though.
Perfect.
So I, I would also support just putting one, one little addendum on that they have, they have some prepackaged food to be sold at, at the brewery when you're open. And that gives you a lot of flexibility, and I'm seeing nods in the back, so I think they are there in agreement also.
Well, we appreciate that. You know, it's, it's been a long road, you know. Come down, we'll tell you all about it, the good, the bad, and the ugly, so...
You can guarantee it.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Did we do that?
I, I move that the Board of Selectmen close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. That passes five zero zero. Now we're here to deliberate. Any other deliberations from the board? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen grant the special permit as presented with the addition of prepackaged food available for sale to Modest Roots Brewing for craft brewery and taproom at Three Industrial Way, Unit Two.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. That passes five zero zero. Congratulations.
Ah, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Mike will join the Finance Committee.
The next public hearing, can we have a motion to open the next public meeting, which is for the car wash?
I move that the Board of Selectmen open the public hearing and waive the reading of the hearing notice and the legal ad.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. That passes five zero zero. Can I ask the people for the... Shannon, do you want to kick this off, and then we'll, we'll invite people?
Yeah, absolutely. Do you guys want to... Yes, yeah, absolutely. Set up whatever you need.
Seat in front here? Shannon, you going to kick this off?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so included in your packet tonight is an application for a special permit for a tonal car wash and vacuum stalls under section two eleven and two eleven thirty of the Tingsborough zoning bylaws. The applicant, Jim Waterman, on behalf of Garnet Reynolds Holdings LLC, is requesting a special permit to operate the car wash at this site. Currently, this location is Flanders Family Trailer Sales. The applicant, represented by Nicosia Associates, is here tonight to explain the application and to answer any questions that the board may have. In reviewing this application, our office requested comments from all relevant departments, and there were no adverse comments. Our office also requested an independent site plan review by Keach Nordstrom Associates, a firm frequently used by the Conservation Commission and Planning Board. Additionally, we advertised this hearing in the Lowell Sun on June twenty-seventh and July fourth, and the applicant sent notices to a butters by certified mail.
Thank you very much. I'll open the floor up to you, if you want to kick this off.
All right, great. So hello, good evening. Thank you for, for letting us present this project to you. Four twenty-six Middlesex Road, we hope to become Washville Car Wash. Our attorney counsel, Peter Nicosi, is unable to make it tonight, so I'm going to be presenting on our own behalf. My name is Jim Waterman. I've been a resident here in Tingsborough since 2013. I'm a career car washer. One thing that I noticed when I moved to town was there was not a great Express model car wash locally, and there was nothing that was even close by, and that was what I was used to and where I came from, out of Western New York. I told my wife in 2013 that Tingsborough needed a great wash, and someday I was going to build it. I also decided that if I had my choice to pick a property here in town, I would pick four twenty-six Forest Marine as my ideal location. Ironically, I came to an agreement with Mr. Flanders to, to offer me the property, and here I am today, asking for approval. I want to tell you a little bit about Washville. So Washville is our brand. And my team represents the fastest and most advanced express car wash concept in New England. Express washes are a concept where we provide the fastest, most economical, and environmentally friendly car wash facility. Washville currently operates eleven facilities across New England. Our brand is rapidly expanding, and we're excited to bring our brand to Tingsborough. My team here with me tonight consists of Brady Carlucci from Seven Multi-Site Solutions. He's heading up the engineering efforts, and I also have with me Crystal Robbins, who's my construction and development manager, that is in-house here with us at Washville.
Uh, he's heading up the engineering efforts, and I also have with me Crystal Robbins, who's my construction and development manager that is in-house here with us at Washville. We're seeking, uh, approval from the board tonight to build our location at four twenty-six Middlesex. We previously met with Eric in planning, uh, Mr. Welkham with building, and all the other town departments in an effort to capture any questions and concerns that we have, uh, for our initiative. Uh, on June twenty-eighth, we did receive approval from the Tingsboro Conservation and Water, Stormwater Committee for our project. A little bit more about Washville. So, Washville strives to be good stewards in each community that we develop in. Uh, we take a lot of pride in that. Uh, not only do we deliver an amazing experience to our customers, we also make a positive impact in each community that we develop in. Um, we, we strive to create jobs, uh, and careers for local people. Uh, it's a big initiative for us to hire local, to stay local, to buy local. Uh, we're very much, uh, in that mentality. We also have a huge track record of giving back to the community. So, at our New York facilities, which we have in Long Island, uh, we're one of the biggest contributors to the Mothers Against Drunk Driving. Uh, we also have donated over tens of thousands of dollars in an effort to raise monies for charities and local families. At our locations up in Maine, we're really proud that we're part of a campaign called the Wish Campaign. The Wish Campaign is, uh, each year, uh, there's about fifty, uh, nominations that are made. And as a, uh, donator or contributor to the charity, uh, whatever's nominated, we would pay for that nomination for the family. So, it might be, you know, kind of a Make-A-Wish situation. Uh, it could be a family in need for new appliances in their home. It, it all gets vetted out through, uh, a local media company, and, and we take care of those efforts. So, we're really proud of those things. We also support local youth, youth sports teams, and this year, we even sponsored a few adult sports teams, which is kinda new and fun for us. Uh, it's really helped get our, our brand recognition, uh, in each one of the communities, and it gives us a, a chance to kinda give us a fun outlet for not only our employees, but our customers as well that want, maybe wanna participate in those events. So, being a resident here in town, I know plenty of organizations and community events, uh, which Washville would love to be part of. So, I'm happy to have made this formal introduction to you as our concept and our brand and with my team. Um, and I'm happy to start walking you through questions and answers on our project.
Thank you for that. I appreciate the, uh, description.
Yeah.
Wish you most luck. Uh, first of all, any residents have any questions about the special permit? Uh, sure.
Um, there's a group of us here trying to get support of the Washville project.
All right, yes. Say your name, address, and then make your comment.
I'm Margie Dunlap. I'm at Eight Strawberry Hill Lane, and I'm here with a group of residents in support of the Washville project. Um, we think it's a great project for our community, for all of the reasons that Jim has said, but we are also here in support of Jim Waterman. Um, he's a great person and a really smart businessman, so I think if he is going forth with this project, we should all support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that comment. Anybody else? Okay, I'll open it up to the board. Uh, questions? Uh, I'll open up the board. Any questions? Selectmen Calabocas.
I have a question. First of all, that was a very nice comment, and very high praise this to you. Uh, I, very quickly, so you had mentioned in passing that your car wash is environmentally friendly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, could you explain just very quickly, briefly, how your car wash is more environmentally friendly than others? Just 'cause I think some people might wanna hear about that.
Absolutely. So, we use a bunch of different technologies. So, we use what we call variable frequency drives on all of our electric motors. It kinda helps our overall power consumption. Car washes are definitely consumers of natural resources, also, such as water and electricity, power, stuff like that. So, we try to reduce our carbon footprint as much as possible by using these technologies. Uh, the other thing that we do is we do recycle a, a large amount of our water. So, we actually have an in-house water treatment plant that we build into our facility. And that treatment plant will allow us to treat that water and reuse it for multiple vehicles to help save on our water consumption. Um, we also use, uh, uh, computer technology to regulate how much usage we have for each car. So, uh, to try to put it in as much layman terms as possible, the consumption that I use on maybe a Toyota Prius first versus a large Dodge pickup truck, our computer analyzes the size of that vehicle. We only use the appropriate amount of chemistry, appropriate amount of water and electricity to wash and dry that vehicle effectively. Um, all the chemicals that we use are all earth-friendly. They're all biodegradable. And all the locations that we've, uh, put these in, a couple of them are considered closed-loop situations where we, we don't have the opportunity to, to take our affluent sewer. Uh, all that water is considered very safe, uh, at, at those other facilities. So, we're really confident in the, uh, environmentally friendly products that we use on cleaning our vehicles as well.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions for us? Selectmen Winnastrum.
Um, so, are, is your facility connected to the water depart, like town water, or do you have a well?
It will be connected to town water.
Um, and they don't foresee that wat, you know, water is always in short supply. Um, they don't foresee, they, they didn't foresee that as an issue?
They did not, they did not foresee it as an issue, and to the point of the fact that we do recycle such a large amount. The amount of, of consumable that we'll use and have affluent to sewer will be greatly minimized by the technology.
And that property was recently connected to sewer, right, with the extension of that line you're on the sewer?
Correct, yep.
Um, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
The only other question was relative. I, I know that we had, um, K and A provide us, and there were responses to all of those items. Um, from a traffic standpoint, the turning left in and out, did we figure that out? Um, I know that that was kinda an open item for discussion on the, the turning left, uh, both in and out of the facility.
Yeah, so, we, we're not promoting a, a left-hand turn. Um, all of our signage, uh, is going to be conducive of right-in, right-out, uh, for the property. Um, we did show a left-hand turn only on advisement from fire department. Uh, we, we, we would love to only have a right-in, right-out. You know, one of the things that, that when we met with.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
We met with Chief Howe, he, you know, he basically said, you know, it is something that we would like to be enforced, but it's impossible for even his department to enforce that. Uh, so, we would try to encourage it through signage and striping, but there's no guarantees. Um, we, we did, I, ask for a cross easement with Mr. Park's, uh, property, which was, uh, something that we're working on getting granted. Um, and one of the things that we did, uh, is on the exit of our facility, there's actually no way to access the cross easement. So, uh, from exiting vehicles, uh, out of our property, there's no way to access that cross easement. Um, that actually greatly reduced the amount of traffic that we expected through the plaza. Uh, and that was something that Mr. Park was, had a concern of, and I think we've addressed. Um, and, um, I think it greatly reduces the amount of, uh, risk of traffic on Middlesex Road, uh, for that left-hand turn. Hopefully, it doesn't happen as much, but, like I said, it's gonna be hard to enforce.
Selectmen Winnastrum, any other?
Oh, well, are you done?
Oh, there's, like, your hand.
I'll go after you.
Your hand.
No, I'm done for now. Thank you.
I mean, I think we have expressed a concern about that, that, that turn lane, especially with the fur, you know, as, as things get more developed and traffic crosses, you can just see sometimes the issues that they have either at Olive Garden coming down, um, or some of those other ones, you know, primarily 'cause of the mall traffic. And so, I think, you know, as that gets more developed, and hopefully if there's something developed behind there, a light would go in at some point, because we do not want big, um, you know, semis trying to take up, trying to come out there and turn left and, and cause that, um, issue. Um, but being said, if a light went in a little further down, because it's gonna access the property behind you, that would probably benefit you at some point, because people could potentially cut out and go the other way. Um, so while I normally have a concern, I think your traffic is probably not to the extent of the big semi trucks coming in to get washed, right? That's, you're not ca- capable of that. You're probably the bigger SUVs and, and trucks, right? That's the limit that you'll be at. Um, so while I still think a left-hand turn out of the, out of there is bad, and, and certainly appreciate that you voluntarily put up signs, and can appreciate that you can't police it. I think to the extent that you en- encourage that, um, right only is, is a good thing, and, and I would, you know, I think you will be o- okay. That being said, you know, knock on wood, there's an ax- accidents there all the time, so.
Yeah, and I think it's a huge improvement from what currently exists, which is basically zero curb cut. So, for us, I thought, you know, creating that, that differentiator between the entrance in and entrance out and encouraging that right-hand turn would be just such an improvement from what's currently there.
And I think an entrance in and entrance out probably is, will, you know, will benefit you in the long run in that, that way as well. So, um, I can appreciate that you've added that as kind of a goodwill effort on the property.
Any other questions with the board? Just like to add, thank you for, 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 for coming in. Appreciate you, uh, considering Tingsboro for your car wash.
Absolutely.
Uh, it's good to have a, a resident opening up a business, uh, also. Uh, and I don't have any other questions. I thank you for your presentation. That was a great presentation and, uh, a great comment from, uh, the resident in the back there, uh, about you, and, uh, I'm looking forward to hopefully, uh, seeing you open. Uh, Matt, did you have something else?
Yeah, just 'cause I know, um, you've responded to Keach Nordstrom's comments, and we've been trying to get this wrapped up as quick as possible to make the meeting tonight. I don't know if they've had the opportunity to respond to your comments yet, if it came in sometime today within the last few hours, or if Shannon received them.
I didn't receive anything.
Right. So, you have responded. Um, all right, I just wanted to make sure, you know, we knew where we were with the comments. Um, if the board, you know, is, is in favor, um, we could certainly vote to start drafting an approval with whatever conditions you may want, just subject to receiving our consultant's last feedback, just 'cause we haven't, just for technical purposes, we haven't had the chance for them to respond to the comments, but I don't think it needs to hold up your approval process necessarily. Just procedurally, we should get those comments before it's all fully wrapped up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, taking contingent upon the comments. Uh, any other questions? Uh, can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. That passes five zero zero. Now deliberation. Uh, any other comments, uh, from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just going back to what we were talking about with the left-hand turn, I do think, and I think it's hard with individual, um, businesses to try to address that issue. I think that that's something that we should probably have Eric look at with Mass Dot. We've got this all the time, and the reality is trying to make it incumbent upon businesses to come up with something is very difficult. And if we wanna be business-friendly, I think we're gonna have to initiate a way to better address that, whether that's adding a middle lane that's left turn only, or whatever it is. But I, I think that we should look at having Eric come up with a way to, to deal with that corridor and make it more business-friendly, given that we've got multiple, uh, projects that are coming in there. And I, I, it's, it's really hard when these come to us to sit there and say, yeah, I know it's, it's hard with that left turn. It can be dangerous, but to have the businesses try to come up with a way to address that, I think we need to be a little bit more proactive and, and come up with a way to, to deal with that.
Any other questions? Selectmen Winnastrum.
Just in response, I, I think of, as a part of the special permit for Olive Garden, it was, it's in there that you're, they're not allowed to ta, I mean, but again, who can it, you know, short of putting a, and that's why there's a sign at the bottom there. But short of putting a police officer and ticketing everybody there, um, i- it's really hard to ma- to maintain, and we've seen some pretty bad accidents there. So, I think it, it is warranted. I think the issue becomes where it's, you know, two lanes on both sides. That's what, you know, whereas further towards the center of town, it's one lane on, on each side. So, it's not as, as hard, um, for people, you know, pull in and out. Um, and depending on, again, their curb cut, it sounds like your entrance and exit are gonna encourage that. So, your, your curbing is, is going to lend people to not wanna turn left and drive over your curbing, right? I mean, I, that's my, that's my understanding of what you're doing to try to promote that. Um, but short of putting a cop there, there's nothing we could do. But how we do that, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a challenge, but maybe it's, it's working with them to figure out strategic lights along there that at least keep, when people are gonna be coming out of some of those businesses, we've slowed down the traffic that's going to be coming in the opposite direction, so that it's not likely someone's coming at potentially that greater speed that they can't stop. You know, it's the same thing, I think, on the other side.
We, we can definitely take an action to look at that longer term, what we're gonna do. Um, I think for this particular, uh, permit, I think we're all set. Any other questions? Can I have a motion then?
I move that the board of selectmen grant the special permit contingent upon comments from Keith Nordstrom and Associates uh, to Garnet Reynolds Holding LLC to operate a tunnel car wash with vacuum stalls at four twenty-six Middlesex Road.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. That passes five zero zero. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Quite the showing. Another place I'll probably try.
Next public hearing. A lot of good support you had.
They're all gonna get jobs there?
Ready?
Can I have a motion on the next, to open the next public hearing?
I move that the board of selectmen open the public hearing and waive the reading of the hearing notice and the legal ad.
Uh, second.
This is for the Sun City Liquors.
Sun City Liquors.
Seventeen Parham Road.
Yes.
Be quiet.
Just call back. Hey, you just call the doors closed, right?
Should we reopen door meeting?
As long as they're unlocked, they're allowed.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I believe I have a motion and a second to open the hearing for, uh, Sun City Liquors proposed at seventeen Parham Road. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. That passes five zero zero. Okay, uh, Shannon, you wanna kick this off?
Yes. Included in your packet tonight is an amendment application for the change in location of Anjali Inc., which is Sun City Liquors presently located at two forty Lakeview Avenue with a proposed location changed to seventeen Parham Road. The applicant, Mina Patel, is here tonight to explain the application and to answer any questions that the board may have. In reviewing this application, our office requested comments from all relevant departments, and there were no adverse comments. Additionally, we advertised this hearing in the Lowell Sun on June twenty-seventh and July fourth, and the applicant sent notices to a Butters by certified mail.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, and could you introduce yourselves, and then I'll, uh, let you, uh, take it away?
Me, Amar Patel, the owner of Sun City.
Uh, my name is Amar Patel. Uh, I wanted to accompany my mother here and, um, just be.
You get the microphone a little bit closer to you. Do, is there anything else you'd like to add about this?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you very much for all your help and support. Um, you made this process easier, and we haven't done this, um, application process for a while. So, just shifting over all the people of, uh, Tingsboro, and, um, we're very excited and happy to hopefully provide what they want and, um, increase products that they keep requesting, and, um, yeah, hopefully we, we can do well.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to ask any residents if they have any comments they'd like to make about this, uh, special permit. Seeing none, uh, I'll open up the board for questions. Uh, Selectmen Calabocas, you wanna kick it off?
I don't have any particular questions. Um, maybe you wanna give a little pitch? So, are you moving 'cause it's bigger?
Yeah, so, um.
You're expanding. Congratulations.
We've been in, uh, Tingsboro, um, for years. Um, um, and over these years, uh, the variety of products that have increased. Um, as you guys know now, it's like craft beers, IPAs, just like a little bit of what we heard earlier. And, um, so, uh, the guests and customers, they, they would like us to increase brands and varieties, but right now, we just, storage-wise, it's not capable, but this opportunity came up, and, uh, we're more, we're more than happy to take it and hopefully provide, and we would hate to see, um, the people of Tingsboro, our customers, and, uh, have to go somewhere else or, you know, to a different town, as opposed to hopefully being here. That would be, you know, hopefully we're providing them good service and, like, we can keep them happy.
Well, congratulations, and I wish you luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Selectmen Aldrich?
No questions.
Selectmen Moran?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm good.
Selectmen Winnastrum?
Um, so this isn't a special permit, but rather just a change of address, is that correct? This is, I've heard it referenced.
It's the same zoning, same zoning.
It's just a, really a formality, you're cha, you're moving locations.
Yes.
And so, you've gotta file with us to, uh, for your permit. Okay. Just so I understand, since we've had special permits here tonight, and that, we've had that referenced and related to you. But, um, I wish you the best of luck in your new location. Um, hopefully it, it gives you the space and everything you need to be, continue to be successful here in Tingsboro.
Thank you. Thank you so much for everything, all these years. It's been a pleasure, uh, serving Tingsboro. It's been a pleasure, uh, serving Tingsboro, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Okay, any other questions, uh, deliberations? Uh, seeing none, can I have a motion then?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the liquor license amendment application for Anjali Inc., DBA Sun City Liquors, to change the location from two forty Lakeview Avenue to seventeen Parham Road.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that passes five zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Good for you. Good luck. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
We have one last public hearing. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen open the public hearing and waive the reading of the hearing notice and the legal end.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that passes five zero zero. Uh, would you like to get off Shannon first?
Yes, last one. Um, included in your packet tonight is an entertainment license application for the Beehive, a coworking community at two Bridgeview Circle, number eight, to show outdoor movies on an inflatable screen on Fridays from seven PM through ten PM on Fridays through October first, twenty twenty-two. And this will all be free of charge to those that attend. The applicant, Chris McCarron, is looking to promote the coworking space that she's opening at this location and is here tonight to explain the application and to answer any questions that the board may have. In reviewing this application, our office requested comments from all relevant departments and there were no adverse comments. We advertised this hearing in the Lowell Sun on June twenty-seventh and July fourth, twenty twenty-two, and the applicant sent notices to a butters by certified mail.
Thank you, I was very excited to hear this, that's such a great idea, but I'll, uh, I'll turn it over to you to kick it off.
Thank you.
Any comments you'd like to add?
Well, just that there are still some things that are, you know, in the works a little bit. The only thing that I haven't actually purchased yet is a projector. But I expect that I'm gonna, rather than rent this stuff, I'm gonna actually purchase it. So it could be available to other community people if they wanted to do a similar, you know, type of thing. I also just brought pictures of the space in case you had questions about that. This kind of shows, um, the building itself is right, located right here. And it, it is basically right on Middlesex Road. So there aren't a ton of residents, uh, except this, the condos are here, not too, too close. But this, where am I? This, this one house is, is pretty close. But other than that, I don't think, you know, that we would really bother anybody. And I also spoke to a couple of, and, and this is like a close-up of, the plan would be basically to have people park on the sides and the front and then have them just on lawn chairs and stuff in the back. So the, I don't think the noise would really be too much of an issue as far as, and obviously it's not like a midnight thing or anything either, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll open up the board for questions. Select, Selectman Winistram.
So it, first of all, I think it's a great idea. And you created, um, a lot of conversation in my house over the weekend 'cause we were trying to figure out where you were and what you were doing. So when I read it and saw your Facebook posts on, on some of the stuff, we immediately were Googling. I'm happy to say we found you. We found out a lot of information about where you were and, um, and what you're doing on the si- i- i- in that space. So, um, y- you've already generated a lot of talk and hopefully that translates to people coming to the, the movies. A couple of questions on, I guess, how are you projecting the, the sound out of it? Are you setting up speakers or are you doing something that, you know, where, I'm assuming you'll need it loud enough for people to hear it. But obviously we are sensitive to the neighbors, like, not too loud that, you know, sound travels and.
Exactly, yeah. I, um, called a bunch of people who do this type of thing. And basically I purchased this, what's called, I have a little picture of it. It's called the JBL Extreme Two. It's just like a one-foot, basically, uh, Bluetooth speaker. But I'm actually gonna plug it into the, the, um, Blu-ray player so that it'll, the sound won't get out of sync, which I understand can happen with the Bluetooth speakers. And basically I'm gonna put it wherever the physical projector piece is. So it'll probably be maybe ten feet into the crowd. So I don't think it's gonna have to really be that loud because people are kinda gonna be clustered around it. But there is just gonna be the one speaker. And I'm told that that's gonna be sufficient.
Great. Um, and then in terms of, like, do you have to purchase licenses for the movies that you're gonna be showing? And, and again, not that you would show something inappropriate, but how, you know, how do we ensure that something that's not quite appropriate for public consumption doesn't end up on the screen?
I guess, so as far, in answer to your first question, you do, there are some movies that are in the public domain, like a lot of Charlie Chaplin flicks and stuff like that. So that might be our first, like, film and while I get the whole other side worked out. 'Cause, you know, it is quite costly to, um, to, to get these licenses. I understand it's between three fifty and five hundred dollars per movie, so. But then there's another, there's like a loophole that if it's friends and family, but I haven't verified that yet either. So I, like I said, I think the first movies are probably gonna be something that's just in the public domain, some kinda oldie type thing. Um, as far as if that it's appropriate, I think, um, you know, it would have to just be trust. You know, like, you, you obviously, I wouldn't wanna put something on there that the community wouldn't want. That wouldn't help anyone and it, I wouldn't put anything on there that would make me or my business look bad. So, but I don't know how you can guarantee that, except I guess you can write it in, you know, like a, a rating type of thing. You know, you could say it has to be rated a certain, um, you know, X-rated film.
And I guess, you know, that's my, my question obviously is just to, to protect, you know, what might be. And I don't know if, if there's, you know, as you're advertising them, you disclose what the, you know, movie film or whatever is rating. So that people are well aware, coming into it, what, you know, I guess, the movie rating is. And so I would be comfortable as long, you know, that, as long as you were disclosing what the movie rating was.
Yeah.
And people can decide for themselves if that's an appropriate film for, for their family you're viewing. And, um, again, just to kinda protect you and, and us from something outrageous showing up on there or people outraged that, that, that some, you know, words were said or anything. You know, people get very sensitive about that and, and I can appreciate that with little kids and in the public space.
Excellent idea, yeah.
So those were my only two comments. I think it's a great idea and, um, I look forward to getting the opportunity to visit your space. Like I said, I had no idea you were there, but I do now have a sense of what's, what goes on there as, as does my family, so.
Well, and at the moment, nothing goes on there except construction. 'Cause I'm just, i- it's, the, the space technically could have been moved into right away, but it has a real nineteen eighties kind of vibe to it. So that doesn't really sync with my personal taste. Nothing against the eighties, obviously I lived through them and they were great, but, you know, I wanna let go of those. So I'm tearing out the carpeting and, you know, just freshening it up. I wanna have a, right now, the kitchen basically consists of, it's like some kind of a little unit that just has a little bar sink and a little fake two-burner stove. And I wanna make that larger because one of the things that we hope to do is, once it's open to, is for the first year, to make it available for free after-hours for the community. So if you had a birthday party or something like that, you know, you could use the, there's like one big room when you come in and that way we'll have a, a kitchen that could accommodate catering and stuff like that.
So I guess I would, Mr. Chair, if I could just ask one more question. What is your vision for that space in terms of, you know, it, it sounds like you're promoting it as, you know, startup businesses and things can come in and use that as like, you know, or conference space or other things for businesses that don't have that. So is that gonna be your niche market or are you trying to get, you know, like the spa- some of the spaces in Lowell? People that need creative space, um, like artists or different things like that?
Yeah, I would love.
Like a maker space?
So they, there's, um, several different types of people. So you could just come in, let's say that you work from home, but you're meeting a client and you don't really want them in your kitchen. So you say, oh, Chris, I wanna just rent a couple hours in the conference room and that's great. All the way up to, um, a company perhaps, like a, a large company that happens to have four or five employees working in that, in this area, who says, okay, we wanna rent an office from you. All of our employees are gonna work in this one office with, you know, the desk and stuff. And they don't have to have insurance and wifi and printers and all that other stuff. They just have their employees show up and it's all done for them, basically. So, yeah, and, and anywhere in that kinda continuum. It's not going to be ever like a function hall type of thing, but I do, you know, the space is there and it's a big open room. So if people wanna do things after-hours, I just wanna make it available. 'Cause, yeah, I mean, the, the, the verbiage is intentional, this coworking community. I really want it to be like a community, like a giant BNI where everybody, you know, you're an attorney and you do business with this accountant and you do business with this, you know, real estate agent and, and everybody who's there. It's not just gonna be entrepreneurs, but, you know, people who just don't really wanna work from home anymore. You know, that at least one day a week wanna be with humans and, you know. A, a lot of the ones that I've visited, there's this whole, um, which is understandable that you just, you go in and you're quiet and you just, you know, work really quietly at your little space. And I, I, you know, that, of course, you don't want people to be really boisterous and, you know, walking up and down the hall with their cellphone. But for example, the kitchen has doors. So if you wanna eat with other people and, you know, have a little time to chat, you know, and I wanna put like some picnic tables outside or something like that, just to kinda promote that feeling of, you know, people, like, I want it to be all the great things about working in an office, but you don't, and, you know, without the boss. 'Cause there are great things about working, you know, in, in an office and getting to meet people and stuff like that. So that's sort of my broader vision for the space.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for asking, letting me do a little.
Any other questions? Selectman.
So relative to the, the movie showing, um, you've got the speaker, um, and, and there are some butters that are somewhat close. What, what is the plan for making sure that it's not too loud for them? Are, do they get a free invite with a spot right up front?
Well, of course, it's free to everybody, but, yeah, and they all have, well, actually, they don't all have my contact info. But I'll put that on some flyers and make that available so that if, for example, they're feeling like they're sitting home and they're like, I can't hear my own television, I don't wanna hear, you know, the Charlie Chaplin music or whatever, then they can text me. Because, and that's what I, when I spoke to some of the other companies that do this, they're like, you know, what do you do to make sure that the com- that the community is happy? And they say, well, if they complain, we turn it down. And I guess that would be my plan as well, you know? I mean, I, I think it'll be obvious to me, you know, I mean, if, that it's too loud. But if not, if people, you know, wanted, wanted to, uh, request it, then as long as everybody can still hear it, we can turn it down. That's.
And then the, the other question is relative to bathroom facilities?
So the plan, if you are all okay with this, is that people would have to come into the Beehive to, to use the bathroom. But that's upstairs, so I don't know if that's okay. You know, we could certainly rent like a handicap thing. But I, obviously I'm trying to keep the cost as low as possible, so.
Yeah, I don't know, are there any ADA issues relative to this?
Is there an elevator?
Not at the moment. That's definitely on the budget because, you know, I've had to bring a lot of stuff upstairs and I didn't enjoy it very much, so. But it certainly wouldn't be installed in time for this.
We can double-check with Paul the bathroom situation. I think as long as the bathroom is available at the business, that's essentially hosting the function. I think that's fine, but we can certainly double-check with him and make sure appropriate facilities are available.
Yeah, and then, um, Paul would be the one relative to noise, right? To, to, 'cause that would be the other question for him would be, okay, is there a way for us to, to make sure that, um, you know, so, our bylaws relative to sound, that those are being met? 'Cause that's under his purview, correct?
And then the board of health.
Well, what are the quiet hours as far as the ordinances and stuff go?
Is it ten PM or something? I, I thought it was ten, but that's not my area of expertise.
Typically, um, up till ten PM is considered like the public time. Outside and yelling.
I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
I'll make it quick. So I'm just trying to envision like what the space is going to be. So we, in my mind, we have kind of like a WeWorks type situation on the inside. And then we have this open to the public movie night on the outside. Is this gonna be a place, some, I'm trying to think of all the different ways that it can be used. Maybe like, you know, we always have conversations about, but the, you know, the parking wreck building is kind of a bit of a mess right now. Like the gardening club needs places to meet, things like that. Is that that type of thing where like local clubs and communities can either rent out rooms for their? Is that kinda what we're going for? Is like, is it more just like groups or, I'm trying to figure out how the inside is jiving with the movie outside ordeal?
Um, I'm not sure that it necessarily is, you know.
Correlation?
Yeah, I just like outside movies. You know, I like the whole summertime, everybody's sitting outside, you know, thing. But it doesn't really relate per se. But as far as your question, and I actually forgot to talk about the artist thing for you as well. Um, I wanna have a little, um, there's a thing called hot seats, what they call hot seats. So y- you know, let's say that you just wanna come every so often. So you get a punch card that has ten visits, for example. And then when you just come and you don't get a dedicated desk, it's just a, a seat at a bar like what you see at a WeWork type of situation. So you, you know, you come in, you do your work, you do, and then, you know, the next time you come, you might be in a whole different room. So there are three rooms that are dedicated to that type of a scenario where you just come in, there's a big, you know, a couple big bars with different kinda desks and you just sit and do your work. And then the next level would be like a dedicated desk. So you'll still be in an office with other people that are doing other things, but it's your desk, you can leave your stuff there, you know, whatever. But then in addition to that, there are conference rooms and one big, uh, training room. So if the garden club wanted to come and, and that'd be presumably an after-hours event, so with the first year, it'd be free for them. After that, it'd be twenty-five dollars, you know, or whatever. I don't know what it's gonna be, but it won't be much. And, but if they needed to have it during the day, we could, I mean, I think they need to, they would want to reserve it. So then I'd have to charge them something. Those sort, it's quite inexpensive, it's like ten dollars an hour or whatever, so, yeah, not a big deal.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out the general flow and what it was gonna be used for, so, thank you, I appreciate that.
Come for a tour.
Yeah, you can, we absolutely will.
You just have to forgive the carpeting that hasn't been taken up yet.
No, please, no worries.
I just have a couple of questions. I'm nodding, nod over.
Can you, uh, come to the mic, uh, introduce yourself? Name and address and then.
Well, I'm just a resident, I live in the back. I'm not against it, I'm just genuinely curious how it's gonna work. I don't know if anyone's even been down there before. I'm assuming no one here has. It's like a really, the front businesses are pretty small, um, and it's a one-way. So you come down and if you don't turn into either of the two businesses, it's, you go down and it's a circle and it's a one-way. And when I say it's a circle, like, when you're turning, you can't, you can't see beyond the circle. Everyone in, my fear is, I, I love it, it's so quiet there. I see deer in the backyard, I see animals all the time. So it's like very, very, very quiet back there. So because it's a one-way, sometimes like Amazon trucks and stuff will come and they won't know and they'll come back up the other way and it is really, really dangerous. So I guess, how are you gonna prevent people from continuously going down? 'Cause everyone who goes down there, I know, like, that's that person, that's that person. So if you continue to go straight, it's the circle, um, and I guess.
Oh, good.
That's kind of my, I'm not against it, I just honestly don't know how it's gonna work. It's very, very, very quiet down there. Like, again, I see animals even on the other sides of the businesses. I walk my dog there all the time, it's nice and quiet. And same with parking. So down further, we had a paving project, um, a couple months ago. And we actually weren't allowed to park in the businesses. We had to park in Innovation and then walk to our house 'cause the businesses didn't allow us to park there. So I'm just curious like how everyone is also gonna park.
So this building, we, the way this works, this building's a, this is, first I wanna talk to the fact that they didn't let you park there. Because the people who used to own the unit that I now have kind of controlled the whole association. They, they never really turned it over to the other condo owners. And they, if were asked perhaps, they didn't want people to park there. But now we're a real association and we're meeting and everybody's really nice and they're really motivated to take care of the building and fix the parking lot and do all that kinda stuff. And I would be shocked if they wouldn't let people park there if there was some kind of a thing going on that you couldn't park in your own space. But it's an excellent point that you bring up about people going down there and, and it's gonna frustrate them as well, right? And it's gonna frustrate you. So I think we should have a big sign that says, "Park here for the movie." 'Cause we don't want anybody parking down there.
But if there's like also like overflow parking, like if, I just don't want people to migrate. And I love the idea, I do, I love the idea, just there in that area.
No, there's really limited parking there, we, we don't want you to.
Yeah, yeah, and then, which is, I'm sorry, is it the left or right building?
If, from, on this picture, it's the left-hand building.
So it's the one where the cursor is?
Yes, exactly.
So, you can't really tell, but you literally can, in the parking lot, you literally can see the person's balcony through the woods. Like it's that, it's pretty close, and I know you sent out a letter, so if someone was against it, they could've showed up, but like, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand how it's all gonna work, that's all.
For sure, if we do the first one and everybody's like, you know what, we can't even hear ourselves think, this is ridiculous, you know, then, I mean, I mean, I'm hoping that people where you live will wanna come work here, so the last thing I wanna do is make everybody angry. So I think, um, yeah, I mean, if you're comfortable with it and if, if everybody else feels okay about it, then, you know, we could give it a try the first evening and just kinda see how it goes. Or I could even do sort of a, which we'll probably do anyway, is like a test run of the equipment and make sure that everything works and just see how, how loud it's gonna be, because I don't, I mean, I've asked and Googled and done all kinds of things, to try to figure out things like decibel levels and all that kinda stuff, not that it means a hundred percent to me, but you know, just to understand what to expect, and there is no answer. You know, like I said, I called these professionals, they're like, oh, if they're unhappy, we'll turn it down. I'm like, thank you, not helpful. So, I mean, if we can just kinda play it by ear the first time and if it, if it does end up being like, wow, this is echoing all over the buildings and it's horrible in the community, then, you know, it's just, I mean, we, I, I don't think we can bring it inside, cause it's a big twenty-foot screen. But we could certainly, you know, just abandon the idea, it's not, you know, not the end of the world.
Is it gonna be like out front to the street or in the back?
Well, I was gonna have it in the back because of the car, of, of road noise. But again, we could move it to the front if, if that's, could be an option if the, if people are like, mm, no. And I actually wanna look at, there's, I think there is a little more parking in the back, so. I haven't been here that much at night, so I don't know how busy it is if the car noise would be a problem, because that's certainly a solution, I think, too, to move it to the front, but, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask another question? So if, if, cause it looks like we're, we're looking for an entertainment license for all the way through October.
Well, that, and that's just.
Yeah, and that's fine, what I'm wondering is if we were to, um, have a much shorter duration where we could do one or two of these, see whether there are issues, cause we don't know what capacity is, we don't know what the sound levels are going to be, we don't know what any of those things are. Potentially give you an opportunity to do a dry run on, on one of those things to, to determine those, but then, you know, I, I don't know what we, whether we would issue the permit just for a short period of time and have her come back, or whether we would issue it for the longer period of time, contingent upon no issues relative to that. Which way is the easiest way to do that and first, would you be amenable to that?
Sure, yeah, I mean, I'm not married to the idea of giving up all my Friday nights either, you know, I mean, I, I just thought, you know, I had to do certain parameters for the thing, I originally wanted to do Thursday night, but then, you know, they're having stuff at, um, Mommy Cruises, I mean, Mommy, thank you. On Thursday night and I didn't wanna interfere with them, so, you know, I just wanna be a good neighbor and have fun and stuff, but, um, yeah, absolutely.
And so Matt, what are our options, or Colin, do you?
So as a license issued by this board, you could issue it till October first, and if neighbors complain after the first one, this board could rescind the license, it could modify the restrictions. If you issue just one for two, the applicant would then have to do a new public hearing, we'd have to pay the law son to re-advertise. The easiest, without the board giving up any authority, would be to grant it for the entire duration. And if abutters do have concerns and they either, they call the police because there's excessive noise, this board could at any time ask the applicant to come back and either rescind the license or add new, new modifications.
Okay, thank you.
Select woman, did you have a question? Uh, any other questions?
I mean, more of a comment, I mean, by, I think by limiting the hours, we've, we've kind of set the parameter in terms of, of the noise, because anybody can have any kind of noise outside up until a certain period of time. So, you know, by saying, by setting the hours, you know, if you're comfortable seven to ten, because you, you might end up with a three-hour movie that, you know, that.
That's more like darkness, you know what I mean, we'll make it earlier when it's dark enough. So that's the only reason we wanted to go till ten.
You know, I think reasonably you're gonna be a good neighbor and try to not upset the people behind you, but technically if there was loud noises outside anywhere, at that point, nobody can really kind of limit or control it until that ten PM hour, and then they can call the cops on the excessive noise, right? Like that's the way it is for all of our license holder businesses who get entertainment licenses for outdoors. So I, I, I think we're putting in some safeguards for the neighborhood. I, I guess I am concerned, you know, I honestly never been back there to know, we wouldn't want the traffic flow to, you know, cut through there, but can't control it, a lot of people cut, sometimes cut through different streets in town and hopefully, again, you're gonna do your best to, um, put people into the right spots so that that doesn't disrupt that.
And I don't know what the turnout would be, but I'm hoping that some people could also, you know, walk, ride their bike, you know, people who, certainly the people here aren't gonna drive over, you know, so I'm hoping that there will be people who don't need to park. Um, I don't know, but I, this is just a giant unknown for me at the moment, so I apologize.
I mean, I, I guess I would just say I applaud your effort and I think it's a great way and, you know, trial and error will correct, you know, any things that, that happen, I think, in the first few stumbles. But I, I would be, you know, comfortable issuing it, knowing that, you know, you're pretty easy to work with, you, you're, you're being pretty honest and coming in, and then just asking that you disclose the ratings of the movies and be open to feedback from the neighbors, which it sounds like you are.
Definitely.
Any other questions? Thank you for, for coming in, uh, appreciate it, and I think it's a fantastic idea. I wish, uh, more residents would come up with these ideas, uh, to get the community together, uh, even more than they, we do now. So, uh, I applaud you, uh, for that also. With that, uh, can we close the public hearing, or close the public hearing?
I move that the Board of Selectmen close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, it passes by zero, zero. Uh, any other comments before?
Just, I wanna point a clarification on the noise ordinance. I just pulled up our zoning bylaws and there is, um, maximum decibels of fifty at the lot line of an adjacent or nearby residence or institutional use weekdays during the hours of six PM to seven AM. So, it, it.
I think fifty decibels is pretty loud.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, but there is, we have talked about ten o'clock and I just wanna make sure that, um, one, that it's, it's reasonable and two, that there are provisions for the abutters. If it is very loud, certainly we wanna make sure that, um, it, it is a situation where, if there is a complaint, it's valid, you know, whether it's too many people and, and, you know, we have parking issues or it's just too darn loud, whatever it is, I think whatever we put in there, let's make sure that we put it as a stipulation in here if we can, and let's not assume on the, on the bylaws, um, just because there are some things in here. And this is one of the reasons why we're rewriting them, cause they're hard to find.
Hey, any other comments? Any other suggestions how we incorporate that, or is that just?
It's always safest to, you know, add that additional clarifying language into the motion, so, you know, if there are concerns potentially about parking and/or noise complaints in the future, I'd recommend, you know, approving the motion for the special permit, you know, contingent upon the board, um, retaining its ability to modify the conditions of the permit if there are, um, you know, bona fide complaints received, whether it be for traffic, noise, you know, or any other issues on the site that may violate the town's bylaws or ordinances, particularly the noise ordinance. You could say so moved if you'd like, as Shannon can review the recording.
Second.
Well, one oth, one other question that, you know, just kinda thought of is, you don't necessarily plan on doing this every Friday night, right? You're gonna run out of free movies to be able to show before you have to start buying them, so.
Right, I just said, I had to put some dates in, in there, so I just said, let's do ten weeks, right?
Between now and October, it's ten weeks, so.
And I won't be ready to start this Friday, so.
It won't be every Friday night and it, you know, chances are it could be five out of the ten or four out of the ten, right? I mean, that's your goal.
Right.
Any other questions? So I have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, passes five, zero, zero, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Forward to it.
Me too.
And I would just encourage the residents, if there are issues, to, to make it known, since obviously we wanna make sure it's a appropriate use of the space and sensitive to the neighbors, so if there's a problem, call the office.
I think it's not so much the noise, cause we have Vesper and the noise literally travels, like some nights I literally, like, like listening to the wedding. I think it's more the, it's not even like a street when you go back, so like, and you can't really see where you're going, like around the corner. So my fear is like my kids play out there, so someone just comes by and that's kind of the gist of it. It's very, very, very private back there, so.
Okay, so, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to new business. Uh, on new business, we have finalized Board of Selectmen Town Administrator fiscal year twenty twenty-three goals. Mr. Town Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I think this is the first time new business has ever been number eleven to start, so it's interesting. Based on the feedback at the last meeting, we reworded a few of the goals to make it a little clear that some of these items are things that we plan on working on and would like to accomplish. Uh, at the last meeting, you'll remember a few of the goals said, we want to do X, but it may involve other boards, other departments, employees, things outside of our control, so we just wordsmithed some of the goals to make sure that it was clear that these are priorities for the town, um, and we hope to make progress on them, but, um, some of them, um, to achieve the goal, maybe they're reliant on outside, you know, individuals or sources and, um, you know, achieving the goal may be, uh, a little different for each of them. So would you like me to reread all of them? I mean, you've had an opportunity to view them.
I think we've gone over them already.
Yeah, they haven't changed significantly.
In the packets, um, I think I'll just open it up to the board if they have any questions. I mean, clearly, uh, we did this last year, uh, these are goals that we're, we're looking to achieve. You know, you know, we can add, we can add more goals, uh, at any time. Anybody can ask to put anything on the agenda, uh, at any time, uh, this is just giving us a starting point of what our goals are for this year. Uh, so having said that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I didn't see anything on here that, you know, oh gee, I don't know if we should be doing this or this isn't very important. I thought there was some really good things that are on here. I liked how you, you tweaked some of the language to make it a little bit clearer on some of the items. I, you know, I think like it is last year when we had eighteen of them, there's a concern, cause there's sixteen of them, but we did get through almost all of them last year, so, you know, I, I, I like stretch in some of the goals. The only other thing that we'd wanna do relative to how we use these, um, I think Selectwoman Wenerstrom mentioned this the last time, is making sure that if we're going to measure the town, um, administration and management, that we have specific and measurable items that are on here. A bunch of these are outside of your, your control, um, so I don't know if we need to call that out, or we just say, these are our goals, and then perhaps draft something different relative to how we're going to measure, the town manager and, and his office.
Well, if it's, if it's obvious it's out of his control, um, that's one thing. But I think most of this, uh, most of these are, you know, s, either Matt, Colin, Shannon, or somebody else and, uh, you know, in, in the group is going to be assigned these, uh, to, to do these, to do these goals, so. I don't really think we need to do that, I think these are, are, you know, it becomes very obvious it's something beyond the, the control of, of Matt, and we're, we're gonna know that as we go forward, and I, I'm not really sure which one in particular here you're, you're thinking of, but, uh, I think these are good goals, uh, that we can move forward with and, and, and adjust accordingly a, as we go forward. Like you said, if there's something that's beyond our, beyond our control, we can, we can take it off in the future. Uh, this is kind of a working document, the way I look at it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I mean, like I, I appreciate Selectman Eldridge's comments, and I think like you look at thirteen and fourteen specifically, support the creation of a Tingsborough Land Trust or support the establishment of, well, the day before the, you know, quote-unquote, review, you could write something on paper and say, I supported that, did that really accomplish the goal? So I think on some of those very broad ones, we, we do need some measurable items. You know, support the creation of a Tingsborough Land Trust, what does that re, what is, what is, if the goal is to, to have at some point within this timeframe, the creation of the land trust, then it needs to be a little more specific than that, because just to say, I support it, you could say you support it here now and check that off as a goal, because that's all it says, support it, I support the land trust. So I think, again, you know, having done employee reviews and goals and stuff with people for the past twenty years, we, you know, I've learned that you've, uh, in a lot of places, you have to be very specific about what your measurements are going to be so that there's a clear understanding from both sides, so that again, somebody new, you know, is elected, they can step in and see, here's how we were supposed to measure these, I mean, it's, and having done this, you know, with the school superintendent for nine years, I mean, it's the same thing, some of the, some things are out of his control, but we had very specific measurable goals to see if there was progress made towards the completion. It might not be completed, we might not expect all these to be completed, but we wanna see measurable steps towards their completion. So I think either we have to be a little more specific, or we have to then turn this into a matrix of how we're going to judge how the work gets done and the review happens when we go to compare these goals at some endpoint in time.
Selectwoman Calabocas.
I think that for a lot of them, it says work with X, which apply, implies to me that obviously it's not directly in your purview, you have to work with people to do it. I understand the concerns about specificity a hundred percent, I think we are reading it a little bit differently. When I read support the creation of a Tingsborough Land Trust, um, I don't read like, we all have to say, yes, we agree, we support the Tingsborough Land Trust, I think maybe we can change that to have the same work with, because the end process really is, it's not us, the board, that's creating the land trust, we're just helping other departments do that. And I do also think that like, the, the goals are just for us, the selectmen, right? What do we want to accomplish, it's not really supposed to be measurable for like other, is that what you were?
Well, it's, I mean, the, the title is that they're the goals of the Board of Select, Board of Selectmen and Town Administration, and obviously when it comes time to review, that's in the past what we've held the town administrator accountable for. So if we're going to hold him accountable for these things, I think some of them need a little bit more specificity or need some type, we need to in conjunction, some type of matrix so that again, it holds the person accountable.
I would say that my expectation is not that if the administration does not get all of these goals, that there is some kind of penalty. That is not my expecta, my expectation is, these are the goals that we hope to accomplish, as long as we're all working on it as a team and it gets along some road, right? Then, then it should be a job well done. I, I just wanna say that my expectation is not that this is your to-do list and if you don't get it done, that's bad, right? We, we all have to work on it as a team towards hitting this goal, but sometimes we hit our goals, sometimes we don't, right? Do we want to hit all of them? Yes. Do we want to try our best to hit all of them? Yes. If there is some reason that we're not hitting them, we need to review it, but like Selectman Eldridge said earlier, we had a ton of goals on there last year, I honestly did not believe we were gonna hit as many as we did and I'm really proud of the whole team for hitting as many as we did, so. I guess from my point of view, I am fine with the work with language, I see both of your points about the specificity for the support the, maybe we can change that to work with so that it doesn't sound like our only goal is to just say, yes, we agree with this. But otherwise, I, I think, I mean, it, we, if we go into. But otherwise, I, I think, I mean, it, we, if we go into the minutia of all of this, I think we're gonna get lost.
If I could just respond, I don't think it's, it's, you know, I don't look at it as penalized. I think it's more, again, to hold the, you know, person, I, you know, hold the group of us collectively in the town administration as the employees, you know, to set them on a path for success, and to help them understand what our objectives are in those goals, so that they can be met, and it's not, you know, it, it becomes clear what they are, and it's to set someone up on a path for success rather than a punitive measure. It, it's to advance everything along, so that, you know, I guess that's the way I see it. And again, if you're gonna hold somebody accountable for reaching a goal, and it, not in a punitive way, but hold them accountable to be able to say it was done or not, there has to be some level of measurement and understanding of what we're all working towards.
I'll, I'll just say, you know, last year, you know, reiterate again, I think we hit fifteen out of the eighteen goals last year. Uh, and it was very clear in the description, uh, when we didn't attain it, you know, the reason why. So, I, I think it was very measurable, um, and I think what it really helped do is, is at a starting point, which is where we're at now, is, is, is to lay these all out, so we can make progress throughout the year to, to hit all these goals. And I think the reason we hit fifteen out of eighteen last year is we started a year early, right? We started like right, you know, now we're starting now, and we're gonna go till, till, till June, right? So, you know, that was, that's the idea of, of setting this up. Now, last year, I think we did say, you know, support a couple of groups, um, and then we did support, uh, you know, like, the, uh, the Public Safety Building Committee. Uh, we did support them, they made some, some progress, but we hit a, you know, we hit a st- we hit an endpoint where we didn't, we weren't able to finalize it. So, we got to a point where we were able to support them, uh, but in the end, we couldn't say we finalized it, because they didn't finalize the report. And in the goal, it had finalized the report, right? So, um, so I, I think it is important to try to keep defining these as much as we can, uh, if we hit a roadblock, we discuss it, right? You know, is this something that we can have them accountable for, or is this a particular group hit a landmine because of a legal issue, or something else, or something else? I mean, we, we can tweak these a little bit, but if we keep getting into minutia, um, I think we're gonna kind of get lost. But if there's any in particular we want to change, I mean, Matt just changed a cup, one or two of them up there, um, you know, we, we can, we can change that. But, but let's do it tonight, and let's kind of move for- I would hope we would move forward.
Can I make, I was, I was just gonna make a suggestion, I think, 'cause I, I hear what we're all saying, and I think we can come up with, 'cause I deal with this a lot, when you're dealing, these are, this is more like vision, this is like high level, this is thirty thousand feet. And I think if, if, so let's keep it at that, but that doesn't mean that we don't need to get to that level of specificity. So, what, what might be in our best interest, and what I would throw out there, is that we agree that this is the vision, these are the things that we want to work on. And then for every one of these, we come up with, okay, what is the scope? What is included in that? Is that, um, you know, crafting what the design is going to be on this item, so that it's ready to, to go to town meeting and be approved? Is it, uh, you know, building a building? Is it, whatever it is, let's come up with those things. I don't think we're gonna come up with that here, but I think what these do is we say, here's the high-level vision of where we want to go. This is gonna spawn individual projects, if you will. Some will be under Matt's control, some will be working with some other folks, but then we, we articulate that. We put those down, and so that they are specific, and they are measurable.
Can you just add a, just a point of clarity?
Yes, Selectwoman Moran.
Uh, Chairman, thank you. Um, these are the Select Board's goals. Separately, just because, my second meeting here, what is the review process for Matt Hanson specifically? Are these goals, or is it entirely review process separate that we do in industry? I've had fifty people working for me, I have to give reviews, all this crap, I'm sorry, this stuff. The idea is, what is his specific review period? What is the measurement in the stuff that we add? Is it this stuff? These are our goals, or are these his specifically?
Well.
I'm specifically asking.
I'll put it this way, there are goals, and they're his goals. He's gonna do them, but, you know, just like, when you're, you know, you, you're, when you have employees and, and you have a manager, you have goals, but you tell your employees to go do it, but in the end, who's your manager gonna?
He's gonna be me.
How's accountable? It's gonna be you.
So, so, I'm just looking, bringing up fourteen again? Because I need you to change thirteen, right?
Yep.
Support the establishment and progress of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. How about just create the framework, so the Master Plan Committee can be implemented? See how we just worded it around?
Yeah, create the framework.
But it's, it's, if, I mean, all we're doing is we're saying, these are the, to me, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, are these volunteers or residents?
So, the Master Plan Implementation Committee is, um, board members and residents. The Tingsborough Land Trust is a little different, because it, you're essentially helping, we're helping to create an organization that will then no longer be a part of the town. It's very different from any other committee, because it can't be a town organization, if we're gonna be putting our land into it. Um, but we've done some of the led work, legwork already, um, getting like bylaws from other communities that have land trusts and found interested residents who want to do it.
That's the work that you're doing, so that's the support, right? So, to, for, um, Selectwoman Wannister, it's, I think that's, I mean, that's the detail that we would then break out sessions to say what we're doing. So I like the, the thirty thousand one, but these are just high-level goals, but there's gonna be four or five bullets underneath them that specify, okay, there's bylaws that are needed to create the, um, land trust. I have to herd cats, meaning residents, right? Whatever that is, you know, I mean, th- we're gonna be doing these things, but there's your high-level goal.
Right.
Because you, you can't control everybody outside of your purview, but you can create the framework, and you can create stuff, or not create, you can pursue those things that allow the enablement of that. So you're setting up the framework again, and you're ensuring that, okay, I've done this piece, but I need other people to participate in it. So that's what we would dig into for the sub-goals, if that is worded correctly.
Go ahead, Matt. I was, I was just gonna say, I think, um, if you remember last year, for example, we did a mid-year update in the December-January timeframe, and we gave an update on the goals, and the purpose I had done that was to make sure that the track and the progress we were making would meet the expectations, because the goals were very similar to this. They were thirty thousand foot, which I think is important, to just have that list of really priorities, goals, et cetera. Um, have no issues, and I think it would actually benefit this conversation if, you know, I either provided that update, or we had a work session quarterly, maybe not an extra meeting, but at least quarterly, rather than wait till halfway through the year, another two months, I can let you know, for each of these goals, they're gonna get broken, broken down and sort of report on where we're going with it. So, you know, on one hand, we could take each of the goals and try ahead of time to write exactly what the issues are, but if we're meeting regularly enough throughout the year, and it's a joint collaborative process, and I can say on every one of these goals, every, even if it's every meeting or every two months, uh, which would be every three or four meetings, the progress I'm making, you can tell me throughout the year, we're not making any progress on the land trust. You've, you know, you've said you're supporting them, but what have you done? But if I can put, I sent the bylaws to five residents who said they're interested, um, I gave them the contact information for our attorney to, to draft it. We had a meeting with the Groton Land Trust. I'll start putting those things under there as the progress report, and if that progress doesn't jive with everyone's collective, you know, vision, I think we're gonna see it pretty clearly, yeah, as we write progress reports more regularly.
And that was, you know, really my thought, again, behind it. I mean, you, you never establish a goal where you don't have kind of then steps to achieve it, and, and because the word "support" could mean
It's just interpreted.
Different to people, the clearer we can be on some of these, then the expectation for all of us is set. It's not just, you know, I view support as, yep, I support it, you view support as actually doing something behind, you know what I'm saying? Because, again, at some point in time, whether it, it could be tomorrow, because somebody's hit by a bus and we have to replace someone, or, you know, at next year's election, when there's this kind of conversation and work behind it, everybody comes in having the same level of expectation about what can be done, and we're all on a path for success.
To answer your questions, Selectwoman Moran, about, um, the town administrator's performance evaluation, um, in the past, there's been a narrative section, and, um, the chairman of the board would typically accept comments from the other board members, but typically out of the main goals, which are, some of them are a combination of Board of Selectmen and Town Administration goals, some of these are more clearly, um, you know, in, in my wheelhouse. Um, I'll, like, finalizing the munis conversion, including payroll, treasury collections, that's gonna be ninety-nine percent me, not you, so that might be one that gets called out in my review, is like one of my five priority goals, and maybe, you know, the security audit and a few of these other high-level things. I'm gonna supply, provide support to the different departments, you know, working with the Board of Assessors on, um, you know, abatement programs. That's gonna be something that maybe a few selectmen are gonna be involved in, some subcommittee meetings with some assessors and things. That's gonna be a little bit more of a board goal, so on my review at the end of the year, I think I'll be essentially graded on, on all of these, but in the past, we've pulled a few out that were more clearly intended for the town manager, more of a priority. And we can, you know, continue to tweak that process. I've been, uh, actually, the chairman had asked me to look at some review procedures that other managers in the area have. I think in preparation, really, for the town manager change, because that may change the review a bit. I'll be more responsible for staff, for example, more responsible for contracting. So, I have some examples from other communities, and, you know, we'll probably be looking at that.
I just think it's generating discussion is, is key here.
And so, as Matt said, I, I asked him to start looking at some, um, some other towns and how they have, you know, you know, looked at their town manager when they went through a review process, uh, to be able to bring that back, because it wasn't as formal as, as I've seen a lot of other, uh, towns have done, uh, when I've seen the report. So, uh, I think we need to get a little bit more formal, and I think that's kind of what we're gonna plan to do. Uh, and as the year starts progressing, we'll start bringing that forward for everybody to discuss, uh, what the correct, or what the new process really should be.
Perfect.
You know, Matt actually hasn't had a review in a couple of years, so, uh, we want to get something more formal, uh, you know, and so, you know, these goals are one thing that'll go into it, so, uh, we'll know exactly what he has done, and what he's been able to accomplish, and I think, you know, that's what we'll do to move forward, and, you know, hopefully in the next, probably in the next couple of months, we should probably bring, we'll bring that forward, uh, what the review process should, you know, you know, discuss what the review process should be, and everybody decide what is, what is, what everybody wants to do for the review.
And I like the idea of the quarterly, quarterly update as opposed to mid-year, because a lot of things can happen in three months.
I do too. And, uh.
Thank you, thank you for the explanation, but I appreciate it.
Um, so, I don't think we, we voted on this last year, it was really just a matter of, of a discussion and a continuing discussion, so if everybody's good with that, uh, we'll just move on. Okay, next thing on the agenda, approved fiscal year twenty twenty-three Board of Selectmen meeting schedule. Town Administrator.
Great, thank you. We went back, Shannon went back and I think watched the narrative, because there was a, a bit of discussion. We added the town meeting dates on here, um, we went back and forth a little bit on the November, um, the November dates, but, um, I think we're in good shape. There was, was it just one date we ended up changing, Shannon? Can you remind me? We went back and forth a few times.
Yeah, uh, the one that we changed, um, I believe we added the seventh is on there, um, yeah, and then we did the twenty-sixth, it looks like. I think there was discussion between the twenty-first and the twenty-sixth, but we went with twenty-sixth. And then we added the town meeting dates on there as well, and we also marked Juneteenth as a holiday, and Halloween.
And Halloween, yeah.
Is everybody all set with the schedule? This is our schedule, do we, do we need to vote on this, or are we just all set with setting the schedule?
To approve it.
Typically, we voted in the past to set the schedule. It can, it's subject to change, um, based on, really, the share typically, but it's our intended schedule, so we can post it online.
Kind of a motion to accept the, uh, selectmen's schedule.
A move that we accept the selectmen's schedule, subject to change.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, passes five zero zero. Next on the, the new business, application for the road race.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, it's the first year the New England Tour de Cure is coming to the Bedford Lexington area. Um, they have a few different routes, and one of the routes is going to be coming through a portion of Tingsborough. Um, the Tour de Cure is a fundraising event, and also seeks to raise awareness of diabetes and provide free information and resources on diabetes. Um, police and fire have been consulted, and they're supportive of the road rate app, road race application conceptually, but they would like to see a final safety plan. They're working with Tim Wilson, who's the applicant, to get that plan, and actually, we did add their preliminary mapping today, but there's some construction work in Dunstable that's going to modify the route slightly. Um, I would certainly feel comfortable if the board wanted to approve the road rates application form, because this is the end of August. Um, contingent upon public safety, approving the final, um, safety plan and, and road realignment. It just may need to change based on some construction, but it's very likely going to go through the Dunstable Road area, through about two miles of Tingsborough.
Um, any questions about this?
What, uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
What, what roads are being closed in?
So typically, it's just, um, this is just the edge of Dunstable Road, and they wouldn't typically close the road. I mean, they may or may not close the road. In the past, some of them have, um, cornered off or coned off sections of road. So that's the, the specifics that the police, um, department wants to work out with them, but, um, they're not asking necessarily to um, close the sections of the road, as far as I'm aware, if I understand.
That road is not that wide, that's why I was like, you, you cone that off, you're shutting down one direction, at least for a portion of it. That's what I was trying to figure out. Um, I mean, I'm fine with there being a, um, you know, a safety plan for it, and we don't know how many people are gonna be going through that hundred-mile stretch, because we're only the, we're only gonna get the people that are doing the hundred-mile stretch versus the other three options that are there. And we'll just have to fit, riders are there from eleven-thirty to two, is what they're thinking for that period of time? Or is that the, my understa- it looks like first riders enter town at eleven-thirty, and the last riders exit by two P M. Eleven-thirty A M, ri- riders exit by two P M, so for a two-and-a-half hour period of time, that road is gonna be impacted.
Okay, you have spray chalk, um, spray chalk, twenty-four by eighteen-inch signs will be removed within twenty-four hours of passing through, yeah, eleven-thirty to two. Hundred fifty was their estimate.
And this is Dunstable Road going from like Flins Corner all the way up into Hollis, New Hampshire?
Yeah, going from Dunstable down into North Trumps Road.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I see bikes on that road all the time, sometimes two and three, four bikes at a time, they're all riding together.
Yeah, I think they're gonna have a few more than that. That's, that's all, I'm just wondering, I, I just want to understand what the implications were and during that period of time, so. Definitely need police and fire to, to give their sa- you know, approve that safety plan, and they would take those items into concern. I just want, I wanted to understand what sort of, um, duration this was gonna impact.
We can certainly send a copy of the, the safety plan, and the, unfortunately, the applicant wasn't available this evening, he's traveling, but we can send you a copy of whatever he comes up with, police and fire, um, you know, just so you're more aware.
For me, as long as the, police and fire are good with it, I, you know, I, I'm gonna be good with it, but, um, I just wanted to understand where that was.
All right.
No other questions?
I hope I did them justice, but I kind of had the same information.
No, it's a great cause, I mean, I, I, I certainly want to support the cause, but by the same, I just want to know what, I want to know, and I want, uh, residents to, to be aware of that as well.
Can I just steal this from the question?
Power technical.
I, I mean, I, my computer already went down, so thankfully, I went down earlier in the evening, um, and got the, the one that was charged back up. Um, I, you know, I mean, I guess the difference, the question that I would, would have liked to have known is, is the hundred and fifty, or is that the total participants in the ride? Versus that's just what they expect in a hundred-mile ride, which is what will come through us? Because obviously, if a hundred and fifty total divided by the three rides, you're the die-hard smallest group that's the, that's coming through Tingsborough, so it could only be five to ten, or is it? Or is it really the hundred and fifty that's going to come through Tingsborough, because there's five hundred people in the race altogether? Because I think it makes a big difference. I mean, I travel that road a lot, and on Sundays, you do see a lot of bike riders. If they're sporadic here or there and it's five people, it might not be an issue. If it's a hundred, it might be, might be an issue for that, that eleven-thirty to two P.M., which is when I'm thinking a lot of people are out either running errands or coming home from errands or church or other things. So I guess that's the concern, is what, what does that hundred and fifty look like coming through town in a two-and-a-half-hour period?
Right. I'd have to get back to you with that particular answer. I can't really tell from their website.
I think, I think on the form, Mr. Chair, if I could just address Mr. Hanson. The, on the form, it said the number of people who they thought would be doing like the full hundred miles, and I thought it was a hundred and fifty, and the rest were going to do like the fifteen-mile, the twenty-five-mile. And that, to me, I'm extrapolating, a hundred and fifty are going to probably be going through Dunstable Road at some point.
I don't think it says.
Or is it a hundred and fifty total?
I mean, what I'm looking at is just estimated number of participants, one fifty. But again.
But was there something further where it talked about how many?
Go back up.
Each group or something, or was that?
Um.
Go back up? Yeah, like right here, like, are some doing fifteen miles, are some doing the thirty? Like, how many are doing the hundred miles? Because those are the only ones who are going to be coming through town.
Right. I think that's the question I don't have the answer to.
Okay.
Yeah, particularly.
But can we, can we vote to approve it contingent upon getting this answer?
Yes.
And the police and fire approving, yeah.
Should I make a motion?
Are we okay with making a motion on that? I'm hearing yes.
A move that the Board of Selectmen approve the road race application as presented, contingent upon police and fire department approval of a safety plan.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, passes five zero zero. West福Comma fifty Old Ting Road.
This is just a modification to an existing special permit to construct an additional two-unit, forty-eight-hundred-square-foot building to be used as building trade shops. I believe they have about twelve thousand square feet of buildings already on the site, so expanding by about, you know, less, less than fifty percent. Typically, for special permit applications in front of other boards, the Board of Selectmen does not make a comment unless you feel strongly otherwise.
I'll open up for any comments or questions. Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
I move to not make a comment.
Yes.
Second.
That's what I thought, anyway. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that passes five zero zero. Contract approvals, Mr. Town Administrator.
All right, great. Kerry has put together a nice memo force, Kerry, you and our health director. So this is the renewal contract for our second year of the grant. It has enabled the Northeast Public Health Association, consisting of Tingsborough, Tuxbury, Trumpston, Billwreck, to hire a regional health inspector, a public health nurse, and contract a software program that allows us to do our food inspections and manage the data digitally. The regional health inspector has completed most of his training, is now doing most food and housing inspections here in Tingsborough. He's been using the food inspection program to do inspections and capture data. He will continue to get training on other aspects of health inspections, such as pools, camps, body art, complaints, et cetera. The public health nurse has helped the Tingsborough Public Schools in Tuxbury with contract tracing for COVID-nineteen and following up on other communicable diseases, run blood pressure clinics in Tuxbury, and has come up with health and safety programs such as Sun Safety. She's just completed the mental health first aid, heart health and CPR instruction training, and will be running related programmings. So we would like to continue these services and ask the board to approve the fiscal year twenty-three Public Health Excellence Grant contract.
Any questions from the board?
Matt, this seems like a very positive thing. It's been working great, no, no drain on anything.
No, I know, you know, it's funny you ask that, because we were a little, you know, you're always curious when you bring a new grant program on and the additional staff, is it going to be more work to manage the staff than it's worth? But I would say overall, the net positive has been great. You may remember that our Board of Health Administrative Assistant actually left shortly after the grant period started, and having a few of these extra people was actually great for Kerry, because normally, she'd be going out on health inspections, so she couldn't step in. But because we had a health inspector now helping her out, she had some time to help fill in and interview and train the new person. So it seems to be running pretty, pretty smooth, and the help is appreciated.
Good, thank you. That's what I thought, wanted to make sure.
Any other questions from the board? Can I have a motion, please?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the fiscal year twenty-three Public Health Excellence Grant contract.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that passes five zero zero. Littlefield Library roof replacement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This board may remember that last year, the town was awarded funding for an exterior restoration of the Littlefield Library through the Mass Historic Commission's Preservation Grant Round Twenty-Seven. This funding, as well as a match from the Community Preservation Committee, allowed us to restore the front-facing roof with original slate, conduct significant masonry work, and repaint most of the exterior of the building. Our intention at the time was to also replace the rear-facing roof, which is currently just asphalt shingles. Unfortunately, due to the market at the time, we simply didn't have the funding. However, I'm pleased to share that the town was awarded forty thousand dollars from that same program through the Round Twenty-Eight grant. That, combined with a forty thousand dollar match that was approved at the last annual town meeting from CPC, will allow us to completely redo the rear roof, so that it will now match the historically accurate front roof. Including the packet is just the standard state contract that needs approval by the board tonight. If approved, we'll put the bid out, the project out to bid in August. The state has a very strict timeline, so you can't do anything before you get to that point. But the first step is for the, the board to accept the contract tonight. And obviously, the Historical Commission is supportive of this project.
No explanation. Any questions from the board? Selectmen Minister.
Considering, I mean, I know that the, who's never hired will have their own insurance since, and, and things like that, since we're not insuring that building against any loss, but should they?
Littlefield is, the Littlefield Library is insured.
Littlefield Library, so it's ju, what?
The Winslow School.
The Winslow School got it.
Winslow is not currently covered for property.
Okay, so the Littlefield Library is covered. Perfect. Um, but again, knowing that we're looking at that site as a potential, for the public safety and potential, what would putting all this money into it then potentially, you know, do we put all this money into it and then all of a sudden, we can't do anything with that building? Do you get where I'm going? Because that is one of the sites that they're looking at, and I believe in order to make it work, we would have to demo the buildings up there.
At least the preliminary discussions we've had on the Public Safety Building Committee would be if the public safety building was put at that site, they would either work around Littlefield Library or slightly relocate it on the site, but keep that building intact. So I, at least the discussions we've had currently, there are no plans to demolish that building. There have been talks about the fact that it would be just significantly cheaper and easier with the Winslow School to demolish it and rebuild a new public safety building in its likeness, but they've anticipated that the Littlefield Library could either still be some type of annex building or an office. Maybe the use would change, but that building is not anticipated to be demolished.
And does accepting this grant in any way restrict what can then be done? So for instance, we've accepted grants for the library or this building, it, we've had very specific conditions under them, what can be, what could, you know, for instance, if library gives us that money, we can't do anything to that library portion of the building for X period of time, because they've invested money in it.
You would not be accepting any conditions that don't exist, that you didn't accept when we accepted the Round Twenty-Seven grant. So when we did the Round Twenty-Seven grant, we do have to put a preservation restriction on the building, but that was done already as a part of the last grant application. So there'll be, whatever you could do before accepting this grant to that building, you still will be able to do after accepting the grant.
And does this extend that period of time, or they're in perpetuity?
They're in perpetuity.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion, please?
A move that the Board of Selectmen accept the forty thousand dollar MHC Preservation Project Round Twenty-Eight grant and authorize a town administrator to execute the required agreements.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that passes five zero zero. Coburn Road Shared Streets Contract.
Thank you. The board will remember that it's, that at its meeting in June, it accepted a grant and authorized a contract with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the Coburn Road Sidewalk Extension Project. This project will see the addition of sidewalks from Lakeview Ave. to Beet Street, as well as the installation of a bus shelter and a bike rack. The project went out to bid in June. Bids were due back on July sixth, and we received four bids on the project, with the lowest bid coming from Ray Contracting. Ray has performed several projects in Tingsborough with no issues. Their bid was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. It is over the grant amount. However, Jake Swicker, our town engineer, has identified additional funding that he has available in his operating budget to cover the, the additional expense. Sometimes if a project is over budget, we'll go back out to bid and hope that it'll come back lower. We don't have the option with this to, to change the scope of the project, because it's funded by a state grant. So there is really no advantage to going back out to bid. We should just accept that the price will just keep going up. So all we're looking for tonight is approval of the contract. We would hope to complete this work by the second week in September. Most of the materials, including the bus shelter, are already here in Tingsborough, so it'll just be a matter of getting on the contractor's schedule.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, question on the supplemental Chapter Ninety. Is that coming from the extra kicker that they threw in for the winter, or whatever they really called that one? Is a part of that?
Rapid Recovery.
Two-hundred-and-sixty, yeah, the RAP, RAP program, right?
Yeah, basically, that money, this amount of money that we'll need for this project will come out of our regular Chapter Ninety allotment, which will then be supplemented in that exact same amount from the Rapid Recovery funding.
Okay. Because I just want to make sure that, because I haven't seen where that's fit in the, the budget and any of that yet, so, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion, please?
A move that the Board of Selectmen approve the contract with Ray Contracting for a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars for the Coburn Road Sidewalk Extension Project as presented and authorize the town administrator to execute the required agreement.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that passes five zero zero. Town Hall Roof Replacement, take her away, Colin.
Yes. The Capital Asset Management Committee and ultimately town meeting authorized two hundred thousand dollars in this year's capital plan for the replacement of the roof on this building. It is original, it's outlived its useful life. We released an invitation for bids for this contract on June first and opened bids on the twenty-second. We received a good amount of bids, ten bids from qualified vendors. The lowest and responsible and responsive bid came from JJS Universal at a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, so relatively under budget there. The work on the contract will include the complete removal of existing asphalt shingles, installation of new shingles with the life expectancy of thirty-plus years, and they will also perform roughly fifty feet of wood trim repair on select areas of the building. If you walk around, you can easily pick out the areas. We did check references on JJS Universal, they all came back positive. They do a lot of work for local housing authorities, but additionally, they did the elementary school roof project in twenty-twenty-one, and I spoke to the school department and they were satisfied with the work. If awarded tonight, we will get on the contractor's schedule as soon as possible. It's roughly a two-week project, so it'll be done by the fall.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
A move that the Board of Selectmen approve the contract with JJS Universal for the Town Hall Roof Replacement Project valued at a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars and authorize a town administrator to execute the agreement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that passes five zero zero. Roads Project, always a good topic of discussion. Take her away.
Included in the board's packet, it is a contract with Allstate's Construction Group for the twenty-twenty-two Roads Project. The details of this project were presented to the board by the town engineer a few meetings ago, but essentially, it will include three-point-four-eight miles of roadway that will see cracked ceiling only. That includes sections of Dunstable Road, Long Pond Road, and Frost Road. It's got a service life of roughly eleven years, and it's part of our larger plan to preserve roads before they fall into terrible condition. Additionally, the town will utilize a rubber chip seal on Locust Ave. and Farwell Road for a total of two-point-two miles and a service life of twenty-two years. And then roughly one-point-eight miles of roadway on Appaloosa Circle, Morgan Way, Shetland Circle, Palomino Drive, Mustang Road. Arabian Way and Althea Ave. will receive a rubber chip seal with a micro surface for a surface, a service life of twenty-six years. Rubberized chip seal is a stress-absorbing membrane type of service treatment that creates a highly durable wearing surface for demanding pavements. There will also be a thin overlay of asphalt on top of the chip seal to make it a little smoother. An invitation for bids for this contract was released on June first, and bids were opened on June sixteenth. We only received one bid for this project, and that's from Allstate's Construction Group. Our engineering department checked references on the contract, and they all came back positive. The total contract value is nine-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, ninety-five dollars and thirty cents, which will be funded by a mix of Chapter Ninety funding, road improvement funding allocated through the marijuana excise tax revenues, and the operating budget for street improvements. If awarded tonight, we will mobilize and get some of the work completed prior to the end of this paving season, but similar to the Jack's Road Project, they will have to come back in the, uh, spring to finish the project.
Thank you for that. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Quick one. This is all materially the same as what Jake had presented, so nothing?
No changes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions to the board? Thank you. Uh, can I have a motion, please?
A move that the Board of Selectmen approve the contract with Allstate's Construction Group for nine-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, ninety-five dollars and thirty cents as presented and authorize the town administrator to execute the required contract documents.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that passes five zero zero. Appointments.
At the last meeting, the Selectmen held off on appointing a representative of the Capital Asset Management Committee, because we didn't have a full board, so it's your opportunity this evening, if anyone would like to volunteer or volunteer someone else to serve.
Selectman Eldridge.
Uh, Mr. Chair, so I was on Capital Asset Management Committee. I was chair of it last year, and I thought that we did quite a bit, but I still think there's some more work, so I would certainly volunteer to represent the Board of Selectmen on capital asset for another year.
Second. Yeah, I, I'd like to volunteer, too. Just so everybody knows, this is actually, it's been a lot more work the past year, you know, we have the ARCA funds and everything else, and we were just, we're kind of just in the process of redoing what the process is for Capital Asset Committee, so there's more work to be done, but we started that. So I would also entertain continuing on that for one more year.
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Eric Eldridge and Ron Cohen to the Capital Asset Management Committee for a term effective immediately and to expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
The motion is second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that passes five zero zero. Unless somebody last minute came in, we don't have anything for the representative of LRTA, so I'll push that off for one more meeting. Board of Health member.
You'll remember the last meeting, we postponed this to provide the Board of Health the opportunity to interview Eikal Amba, and they've successfully completed that and voted to recommend their appointment to the Board of Health immediately. It will become effective after it's also voted and ratified by this board, and the term will expire at the next town election.
Uh, any questions? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
A move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Eikal Amba to the Board of Health effective immediately and for a term to expire at the next town election. I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Ikow Amba to the Board of Health effective immediately and for a term to expire at the next town election.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that passes five zero zero. Agricultural Commission member.
I'm just looking to reappoint Gus Gamras to the commission for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Any questions from the board? Can I have a motion please?
Move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Augustus Gamras to the Agricultural Commission for a term effective immediately and to expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that passes five zero zero. Affordable Housing Trust, town administrator designee.
Yes, the trust, um, is either town administrator or designee. I'd like to appoint Eric Slerner, the town planner and economic development director. Uh, we were both going to all of the first, well, all of their meetings up until their last meeting in May when it just felt a little staff-heavy to have two staff members on that committee supporting them when we were both meeting ahead of time, discussing it, and then at the meeting, and um, he's more than capable to provide the staff support. Um, they work very closely with the planning board, and Eric is already servicing them, so it was just more natural for him to be the actual voting member, since he was going to be going to meetings anyways. So just would like the Board of Selectmen to approve that. Didn't clarify in the trust bylaws whether it needs to be approved as a town administrator or designee. So I designated him for the last meeting, but we wanted to make it more official by having you approve the appointment.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Selectman Winstrom.
So if, if Eric provide, in his current capacity, provides, you know, that kind of staff support for that, does it create any kind of conflict that he's, you know, providing the staff support and then a voting member of that? You know, where, you know, some committees, I, I know, you know, staff are voting members, but they're typically also not staffed by that member, so does that create any kind of situation that might be uncomfortable for the committee where Eric's doing the staff support of it, but then would have a voting member capacity? That would be my only concern.
I think, I think that's a really good point, and I think maybe, um, you know, we, the board, and speaking with Eric and the trust, we can reconsider next year if it makes sense. Their whole first year and their, their first few meetings and the remainder of fiscal year twenty-three is mostly going to be the development of the committee, the further defining their goals, establishing their bylaws, um, seeing if the CPC wants to support them with seed funding. Right now, they really don't have the funding to be an active trust, so it's going to take them probably a good year to get up and running. Once they have some funding available, if a few more projects come in and some developers don't want to build their affordable units, and they start writing checks to the trust, and the trust needs to decide which other developer in town is maybe going to get some money or which nonprofit, it might make sense at that point, or by next year, to, to take Eric off, if he's going to have to then, you know, service some of those projects that come in front of the town. I think for the first year during this, you know, growth phase, it won't be an issue, because I don't expect they're going to be, um, also in front of any projects, but I think we should take that into mind for next year.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, so would that mean rather than appointing him, um, to expire on twenty, in June of twenty-twenty-four, you'd say have it expire in June of twenty-twenty-three and then reassess? That's your recommendation?
Yes.
I can live with that.
Good. Any other questions? Can I have a motion please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Eric Slerner to the Affordable Housing Trust as a town administrator's designee for a term to begin immediately and to expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, passes five zero zero. Town Beach, Town Beach Attendants.
Um, the board will remember that last year we used CARES funding to hire, I think at the time we had three, um, very part-time attendants that police the parking requirement, that you have a, a tag at the town beach. We've seen over the course of the last few years that that beach is getting used, especially after we renovated it in twenty-twenty, um, quite dramatically. If people don't have the parking passes, that parking lot is very small, they're parking along the street. So Allison is looking, Allison Page, our recreation director, is looking to appoint two people to that position right now. She, uh, has funding in her operating budget, so this isn't, we're not using ARPA, CARES obviously is not an option anymore, um, to pay them, and she's only utilizing them this year on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays where we know that it's going to be very hot. In the past, we were doing it Friday, Saturday, Sunday, um, regardless. We have the posting up here at Town Hall, it's been on our website for some time as well. We have two people who are interested. Michael O'Meara is a resident of the neighborhood. He also was a parking attendant last year. And Glenn Cawson, um, is also a resident of the neighborhood. Both of them have submitted letters of interest, and both of them are available to work the strength, you know, the hours that we use. The position is sixteen dollars an hour. It's less than twelve hours weekly, and again, this would likely last just until Labor Day, and it is only on days that, uh, we know will be busy down there. And it has helped reduce people that are parking on the street, blocking neighbors' driveways, and, uh, rerouting people who are not from Tingsboro that are attempting to park in the parking lot.
Thank you. Uh, questions from the board? Seeing none, can I have a motion please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Michael O'Meara and Glenn Cawson to the position of beach attendant for up to twelve hours weekly at sixteen dollars per hour on an as-needed basis.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that passes five zero zero. Uh, we're at the Selectmen Reports, uh, Selectman Winstrom.
None at this time.
Selectman Moran. Selectman Eldridge.
Um, well, I'm not sure if this is the, the spot, but I know in our correspondence, there was the thing that came around from, uh, MMA relative to the, um, the mand- the unfunded mandate from the Commonwealth relative to, um, all meetings being hybrid. I am very concerned about that and the impact to us and how we run all of our meetings. I would like to see us as a board draft a letter to our representatives strongly, uh, indicating our opposition to that, uh, the, the way it was handled. The impact to us is all very, um, negative to, to the town and other towns during the situation. While, you know, it's great to have, I, I do think that we should have the ability to have some meetings where people are remote. Having it across the board with, uh, no mechanisms for the town to, to manage that, uh, is, is untenable. And, um, I think that we as a board should be supporting, you know, the, uh, the town administrator to, uh, draft a letter on our behalf and, uh, indicate our opposition to that, or, you know, we can, we can draft that letter and send it.
Yeah, probably with, um, we could send a draft back out with any additional comments, maybe directly back to, you know, myself or the chair for, in the chair for final approval. I think that's a good, a, good idea, neglected to bring this up, but given that the session ends in a few weeks, they may plan on voting on a compromise bill very soon, so we probably can't bring this back to the next meeting, the v- a final letter.
So can I make a motion that we authorize Matt to draft the letter, run it through the chair for approval and get it sent out?
Will we allow him to make a motion on that?
It was in correspondence, and it's.
Could I ask a question about? Could I just ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, is, is it truly a hardship for us? I mean, we've been providing remote and hybrid options for two years, so I, I guess, is it, is it a hardship for us to do it?
So, so I mean, part of, so here, here's the thing. The way the legislation is drafted, at least as far as we understand it, and we don't know how it'll be finalized, is we've had, um, hybrid meetings where it's set up as a hybrid, the media staff knows ahead of time, and it's easy to set up a waiting room and allow people to come in and out. Um, I think the difficulty or the concern would be, we have a lot of different committees in town that either don't do hybrid meetings, don't have a lot of public input, um, don't have as much maybe staff support when they're conducting their meetings, and if they need to have a, a public, you know, virtual option, to have somebody to manage that for every meeting when there may be nothing on the agenda. Um, mo- most of our meetings, unless you're a regulatory board, like the planning board, conservation, or the Board of Selectmen that have special permits, nothing on your meeting, you don't have to allow public input anyways. Public just have the right to watch. So they're adding something that, you know, even today, isn't, you know, really required, allowing remote participation. Um, and to do it at all times, not knowing if people are going to be using it or not, it would almost be like requiring us to set up a hybrid meeting for every single meeting. And we can do that now, and we have done it, but we ask applicants if they can come in person to do that now, and we try to restrict it only two times when it's needed, because it does the logistical burden of making sure it's done properly. We could get into an issue where if there's an issue with Zoom and we wanted the public to come in, what does that do to the committee meeting? Um, so we need it to be perfect and working every time. Um, you know, where I think we're fortunate here in Tingsboro, we're probably large enough that we could facilitate it if we have to. Um, I imagine some smaller communities would have a, a much more difficult time. But it is a pretty large logistical lift to have to set it up for every meeting and make sure, you know, you're recording. Everyone can hear who's calling in, they can hear the people who are speaking in the room, et cetera. You know, because when you think about it right now, our service that we do to record these meetings, this is purely a courtesy in our local bylaw that, you know, we want all of our meetings recorded. To require the public to then necessarily be able to call into all of our meetings is not something we're doing currently, so, those are some thoughts.
I, I, you know, I just see that this is the wave of the future for a lot of meetings, and I'm, I can see us, you know, saying, I, I not supporting an unfunded mandate of it and, and focusing on that aspect. I wouldn't want to see us embellish what is potentially not as big of a hardship, um, only because it's probably going to be the wave of the future, so at some point, you're going to get on the bus or be run over. For every community, I mean, that's just right, that's the way business is going. But I, I support sending a letter saying I don't believe an unfunded mandate is the way to go, and, and forcing us to do something we're not prepared to do at this juncture.
And I believe that all we're asking for is to extend the way it is now. We can support remote meetings if, you know, if there's a need, yes. Um, but, you know, you get some of these meetings that are in some of the rooms where they're not going to have that type of setup and that ability, so, I mean, I just got, it's not funded, it wasn't well thought out. All they needed to do was just extend it, and we'd be good.
I think we're going to allow you to make a motion.
You are?
Yeah, 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 go, go right ahead.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that, um, we, uh, have Matt draft a letter to our representatives relative to the unfunded mandate, indicate, um, our non-support, and hope that they, uh, will vote that, vote against the, that addendum to it with the draft going to the chair for approval, so that it can be sent out before the end of the, their session.
Second.
I have a motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, passes five zero zero. Uh, Selectman's report.
No, I don't have anything on that. No, no Selectman report, that's it.
Selectman Kellabokus, you interrupted me.
None at this time.
That was your time, you had your time. You're all set?
I'm all set, none at this time.
I am too. Uh, let's go to executive session. Can I have a motion please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen go into executive session to discuss exemption three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
Second.
So declares IAFF Local five two nine seven, NEPBA Local eight B.
Now second.
And I have a motion is second. Roll call votes. Selectman Winstrom.
In favor.
Selectman Moran.
In favor.
Selectman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectman Kellabokus.
Favor.
And I'm also in favor, passes five zero zero. Thank you very much, residents, and have a great rest of the night.